meeting into order at 3:31 PM. Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, we have a quorum.
Okay, I'll ask everybody to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the very power of our Constitution, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda tonight?
Motion to adopt the agenda.
All right, Trustee Thomas, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Trustee Pelley, your microphone's not on?
I will second.
All right, all those in favor? Any opposed? Nope, okay. Well, I would like to welcome all of you, and thank you for joining us at today's study session focused on school consolidation. First, I want to thank everyone that has participated in the process so far, from our superintendent, whose thoughtful recommendations passed in past January of this year helped launch this effort, to the committee members, which included parents, community members, and employees. They dedicated a substantial amount of time and experience and analyzed and questioned a lot of information that was brought forward to build the foundation for this study session. And I want to thank staff who've put in countless hours reviewing and refining those various options for the board to now consider and study today. So it's been a, it's been a process. So it sort of starts with a lot of information, and then it gets funneled down to a little bit less information, and then it gets funneled down to a little bit less, and then today is what we will have to study based on all of the eyes that have looked on this, looked at this so far. So I want to acknowledge, obviously, that the issue of school consolidation is not easy. It's not a simple process, it's complex, and it's undoubtedly deeply personal. As a board, I think it's fair to say all of us have longstanding ties to our schools and our neighborhoods. Many of us attended these schools, worked at these schools, and/or sent our children, or sending our children to these schools. And we share a commitment with you to doing what's best for all OUSD students, and that is at the heart of this conversation ultimately. Of course, some students are going to be impacted more than others, but we are hopeful that the impact at the end of the day will be a net positive in the form of more academic support, better school facilities, more resources, less combination classes, more options for students. And just to reiterate, tonight is the beginning, not the end, of a journey for Orange Unified. There is no set timeline for the work, although some considerations or options may lend themselves to quicker steps forward, others may take more time. Every decision is going to be grounded in what best serves our OUSD students, all OUSD students, in ensuring high-quality education, expanding program benefits, and consolidating resources in a way that strengthens and sustains our facilities and offerings. It's not a decision-making session, tonight is a learning session, and we are also learning beside you. It's an opportunity for the board and the public to begin understanding the options, ask questions, and engage thoughtfully. Any future changes or decisions will likely come in phases, building toward a long-term vision for a stronger, more sustainable school district. Frankly, this issue has been neglected for quite some time. We began discussing it as this board at the beginning of the year. Our consolidation committee was rich in connection to our district, and if and when we narrow down the choices, we are committed to listening to our community and supporting one another through this evolving process. As we've said many times, there is a big picture this board is committed to, developing and tackling their difficult issues, but we're committed to doing that, and we want to continue to be a district of excellence in a time of falling birth rates, declining enrollment, threats to educational funding. We want to be prepared and positioned to maintain all that we do well, and to improve and innovate to make sure we meet the needs of our students and families for decades to come. It takes a village, as they say, and we are all in this together, and together we're going to build a future that reflects the values and aspirations of our OUSD family. And so I thank you again for being here today, and for your continued engagement, and for that engagement which I suspect will continue into the future. And we all look forward to hearing what staff has to offer. So at this point, I will turn it over to Superintendent Christensen to introduce the item.
Thank you, President Erickson, and good afternoon, everyone. Welcome. Thank you for being here so early in the day. We don't typically have board meetings at 3:30 in the afternoon, but I'm glad you're able to attend. I just want to reiterate, because I've received emails from people asking for copies of the presentation, nobody has received this presentation, including the Board of Education, right? I've had conversations with them, I've had conversations with some of you about what some of the content is. We've been working on this so much because we've been trying to distill it down. There's, I think it was five weeks' worth of work that went into this by the consolidation committee, the thirty-some people that were on that committee. They came up with numerous options. There were thirteen potential school consolidations that they proposed, you'll hear those this evening, but we've had to distill that down to, to get this within like a two-hour timeframe, to talk about what the options were, and that we, what we as staff think are feasible options. However, just because we think they're feasible doesn't mean that they're decided. So you'll hear some of that this evening, you'll hear some of the pros, some of the ways that we hope to move forward, which includes engagement periods with communities, with families, teachers, at the sites that are, that are going to be considered. And I will encourage you to reach out and stay engaged in the process, as President Erickson did, because this is just the beginning of the public process of what this is going to be. We know it's going to be emotional, we know that it's going to be messy. This is more art than science. However, we will do the best we can to do the right things for all the students in the district, whether a school is being consolidated or not. We have to consider all of them. So having said that, let's, we have a lot to talk about. If Ms. Holgwin, if you could start us off, that would be great. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Board President Erickson, and thank you, Mr. Christensen, for that, setting that framework for tonight's presentations. And so good afternoon to the rest of our trustees here tonight, as well as our community partners that are joining us this afternoon, and those at home watching as well. Today, we present the comprehensive work that was completed by our School Consolidation Study Committee, and as Board President Erickson said, those were an amount of hours and volunteer hours that our committee provided in terms of the information that you're going to be receiving tonight. And so we appreciate all of that dedicated time that our volunteers who were on our consolidation committee provided. With that being said, we're going to first start here with our study session objectives. So tonight, what we hope to accomplish is to provide the board with clarity on the phases of the process. So as Board President stated, we are at the beginning of a process, and the process that we are currently in is awareness and study. Then moving on to a transition and implementation, but again, tonight is about awareness and study and sharing the information that we have in terms of the committee's work. We're also looking at presenting the board with a condensed summary of the committee's work and the options for consolidation, and then present detailed information for feasible options based on further considerations for each high school's feeder pattern. Finally, understanding the connectedness of consolidation to the needs of the district in order to provide enhanced programs and learning environments for OUSD students. And as we get into further slides, we'll emphasize a little more regarding that, those objectives and the goals here. So I know Board President Erickson gave a little bit of a timeline in regards to the process that we've been engaged in, but here, just outlining for the whole community and knowing, and I apologize, yeah, there. So back in, on January 23rd, 2025, at the board meeting, the board approved the superintendent's recommendation to move forward with the study on school consolidations due to declining enrollment district-wide. And then after that, our district leadership staff held pre-planning meetings in March and April to discuss the data and metrics that would be needed to conduct the study. District leadership staff solicited, I want to make sure that mic is closer to me, because it sounds like it keeps echoing away. District leadership staff solicited voluntary state community partners to assist to be part of the committee for all four high school feeder patterns. We reached out, we recruited by reaching out to our partner groups such as our District English Language Advisory Committee, our labor partners, our OUEA and CSEA, our Parent-Teacher Association, and also our administration. The committee was composed of parents, classified staff, certificated staff, and site administrators from each of our four high school feeder patterns, and then prospective members were shared with the board at our April 16th, 2025 board meeting. The board was also informed that the committee would be starting its work on April 28th, 2025, and we would be presenting the committee's work at a future board meeting, which is today. The committee met five times between April 28th and June 2nd. So again, for tonight's presentation, the format of our presentation will provide a condensed summary of information presented at each of the five meetings, with a few demonstration slides from each meeting to understand the data. So all of our meetings were two hours long, with the exception of our first meeting being one hour. So as you can well see, a lot of hours of information, and again, we're trying to condense this to two hours. We will briefly review all of the options from the committee and district leadership. We will discuss considerations from the committee and district leadership that led to selecting the feasible options, and we will present detailed information about feasible options to determine how to move forward, and finally, look at next steps in the process. So let's dive right into it, diving into the committee's work. So we, we had five meetings, as previously stated, and they each had a specific focus, building systematically on previous information. Every meeting followed a consistent format that promoted both learning and collaboration. We began each session with a recap of the prior meeting, addressing questions, and explaining any revised data. We then presented new information related to the meeting's topic. The heart of each meeting was group work. We mixed teachers, classified staff, parents, and site administration from each of the feeder patterns into working groups with designated facilitators, note-takers, and timekeepers. Each group worked through guided questions, and at the conclusion of every meeting, they shared their options on the data and metrics they had analyzed. This wasn't just about receiving information, it was really looking at active engagement based on the data that they were receiving. So our first meeting, as previously said, was a one-hour meeting, and the meeting for that day was focused on an introduction and an overview, really establishing the committee's role. And as you can see here, the committee's role was to study the impact of declining enrollment. We said this will be an opportunity for a unit of study, and each of the following meetings will be like chapters in terms of looking at the information. They used data, and the focus was to use the data to increase resources for students, staff, and community, enhance the facility needs as part of the long-term facilities plan, with an overall goal to provide options to be considered by the Board of Education, which is again what we are here tonight presenting you with. We discussed at the first meeting, why consolidate? Some of the information that you heard as part of our introduction, low enrollment can force formation of combination classes, inequitable class sizes, and limits teacher collaboration. It also impacts programs, or may impact programs in a negative way, and district resources may be used to enhance in a more strategic manner if schools are consolidated. We looked at enrollment as a whole, and again, this is day one. So here are some slides, just to share with you what the committee actually looked at. And so here you see a slide of California enrollment, historic enrollment from 2014 to 2024, and you can see that not just Orange has declined in enrollment, but that is because California as a whole, and actually nationwide, we are seeing a decline of enrollment, and as stated earlier, that's to a decline of birth rates in part. But here you see that California itself has experienced a 7% decline, and if you were able to see these numbers, we're talking close to 440,000 students. Putting that into perspective, LA Unified has 600,000 students, which is the second-largest district in the nation, and so that would be about almost 75% of LA Unified students when you look at California as a whole with that number. We then looked at Orange County, being that that is the county that we belong to, and so here you see a 14% decline. When you're looking at the actual number of students, that's roughly 68,000 students. That roughly is three Orange districts, or Orange County districts, Placentia, Yorba Linda, Tustin, and Orange combined would amount to approximately 68,000 students, just to again help put the numbers and the percentage in perspective. And then finally here, looking at Orange Unified, a 15% decline, of approximately 4,500 students, and if we were to combine those students in one, in a feeder pattern of elementary and middle school students, that would pretty much be our Orange feeder pattern, our combined enrollment at our elementary schools and our middle schools in our Orange feeder pattern. Of course, because we are talking about consolidating schools, we want to look at what the future brings. So here in front of you, looking forward, our projections show an additional 3% decline expected through 2034. While this is a more modest than our historical decline, it represents continued downward pressure on enrollment. Importantly, these projections are based on current known information, and we recognize that demographic changes, housing development, and other factors could influence these numbers. So again, this was a summary in regards to information that we looked at at our first meeting. Had a question?
I do, I have a question. Can you just tell us and tell the people here, how, who conducted that study, and what kinds of things were looked at to come to that conclusion? That wasn't something Orange Unified came up with, that was something that a demographer came up with?
Correct. And if you, at the bottom of the slides, you'll see that all of this information is based on the California Department of Education and Data Quest, and so they do take this information from CalPads information and compiling it all together. Yes?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
But I think she's talking about the enrollment projections for OUSD. So that was done by the demographer?
Correct, power score, or power school demographer, correct.
Right, and they, they do two levels of, they do an optimistic and a not-so-optimistic. This is the optimistic projection from them.
Thank you, Mr. Christensen. So going on to our second meeting on May 5th, at this meeting, we focused on enrollment and capacity. So again, the committees worked in groups, and they focused on guided questions, and in order to be able to answer the guided questions, they looked at data that, regarding that topic for that night. So here, we see that they looked at current enrollment and capacity data, and the guided questions helped them look at which schools may be considered for consolidation using enrollment and capacity data, analysis of capacity to accommodate additional students, feeder pattern structure, how many schools can be consolidated to maximize facility utilization within feeder patterns, five-year and 10-year en- utilization within feeder patterns, five-year and 10-year enrollment projections, so can the receiving schools continue to accommodate both projected and additional projected students, and then presentation of the consolidation scenarios by feeder pattern based on the data. So again, going back to the format of every meeting, at the end of every meeting, the committee members from each of the groups would present their options. Here are visuals of the slides that the committee looked at. So again, one of the, here, looking at district-wide capacity information, so the team analyzed in terms, and each of these were provided for each of the feeder patterns, additionally, they were provided for each of the schools. So we can't show you all of the slides, because each presentation was about 50 slides long, but trying to ensure that you have a frame of reference in terms of the information they were looking at. This next slide here provides a snapshot of a feeder pattern at a glance, and so the group looked at the information here to be able to gather, again, looking and using this information to be able to answer the guided questions. And again, this information was provided for each of the feeder patterns, and then information individually for each of the school sites. This next one here shows information looking at the high school feeders for El Medina, and again, enrollment information, capacity information, because again, the topic of that evening was capacity and enrollment. Additionally, we provided them with intra and inter-district transfer information, being that our district is an open enrollment district, and so a lot of our students do attend other schools besides their home schools, as you can see here on this visual there, looking at Jordan, Chapman Hills, Linda Vista, and Panorama, where more intra students, so in other words, more students through open enrollment choose to go to those schools versus homeschool students. And again, this was all the data that the committee was using to be able to answer the guided questions and be able to come up with options for that evening. Another way of looking at the data, and so here, on this slide here, it provides information regarding transfers into Esplanade. So the committee, which was very inquisitive, asking questions, well, exactly what schools are the students coming from? So here, they were able to actually look at where those intra students, those open enrollment students were coming from. And so for example, at Esplanade, currently, 42 students from Prospect are attending Esplanade. And again, at the end, using all this information, they provided options. Our next topic, on May 12th, we moved on to transportation, location, and facilities. And again, we always started with the recap, and I want to point out here that there was a topic change, because part of this process also was that staff, district leadership would meet after every meeting. So we would meet together on Wednesdays after our Monday meetings to debrief on all of the questions that the committee asked and what we needed to ensure that we had ready for them for the next meeting. And a decision after our first meeting, originally, the May 12th meeting was supposed to be about educational programs. However, based on all of the questions asked during our first meeting, we changed the topic to transportation, location, and facilities. And that was driven because the committee was really concerned about programs and making sure that we had enough capacity for programs. So we made a change. And so on that evening, we talked about the availability of transportation at our elementary schools, and currently, based on our board policy, we provide transportation based on a one-mile radius, for our middle schools, 2.5-mile radius, and then our high schools, a three-mile radius. Route times are also taken into consideration. Transportation also takes into consideration environmental factors, which include railroad crossing, industrial activity, and as you'll see in a future slide, we sometimes do provide transportation when there are environmental factors, even if the mile radius or students live within a smaller distance from the mile radius. So for example, we have a student who lives six miles, I'm sorry, .6, it's an elementary student who lives .6 miles from the school, however, there's an environmental issue, we will provide transportation. So we wanted to take all of that information into consideration. Our open enrollment and our gate programs, our parents provide transportation to and from school, and then additionally, the committee, again, a focus on programs and special education. So they wanted some information regarding special education routes, and we shared with them that programs follow students, and so we would always ensure that we would continue to provide the transportation for those programs. That evening, we also looked at location, proximity to absorbing schools, and then facilities, last modernization, facility improvement needs based on our facilities' master plan, and then the acreage size for future growth. Again, connection and to the questions that were asked, well, one of the things that we shared with the committee is that if needed, if they believed that that was a school that should be an absorbing school based on other factors, portables could be moved to the schools if needed. So again, this is part of the reason for moving the programs meeting to our next meeting. So next here, you're seeing some of those slides that the committees, the committee looked at that evening. So here you will see railroad crossings and industrial activity for our elementary schools, and I want to point out that six of the nine schools under our elementary are within the Orange feeder pattern. And so again, as we were, are we going to be sharing with you some of the feasible options, all of this was taken into consideration. At our middle schools, Portola and Yorba have some of that railroad crossing and industrial activity, as well as our high schools there. So, looking at additional data, and here's just a visual, so two ways of looking at the information, again, because this evening was looking at transportation. And here is a slide that was presented that evening as part of the previous evening's options that were presented. So at the first meeting, when they looked at capacity and enrollment, these were two of the options that were presented as possible options, and so transportation provided some information regarding the number of students that would need transportation services if these schools were consolidated. So in the first example, it's Esplanade and Prospect, so if Esplanade, if attending Esplanade, three students would need transportation. If Prospect went to Esplanade, seven students would need transportation. So again, just additional data that the committee used. This slide here focuses on the location for that evening, so being able to show the distance between the schools, again, to be able to answer some of the guided questions. And then this next slide here is a snapshot of information regarding facilities, but also putting all of the information, capacity, enrollment into one. And so here, you see that we provided the committee when the school was built, the acreage of the school, as well as facility master plan information, and what it would cost should that school be modernized and updated based on the facilities' master plan. I do want to emphasize that we shared with the committee that day that the facilities' master plan was in 2021, and while it is a facilities' master plan, it is also somewhat of a wish list, in the sense that it includes pretty much, the process of that was, if you had all of the money and could do anything that you wanted to with the school site, what would that be? And so it is a combination of needs, but it is also a combination of wants. So that was also something that we shared with the committee. Oops. Okay. Moving on to our May 19th meeting, so now, our fourth meeting here, we looked at our educational programs. This was going to be the meeting with the last set of data, in terms of data that they would be analyzing. For our recap, again, we had a great group that asked great questions. They wanted some information about operational costs and additional information regarding the facilities' master plan, and in a future slide, you'll see how we address those questions. In terms of the information for educational programs and the guided questions for that evening, was to look at, are there special programs offered at some options and not the others? Do programs allow for merging? What options should special education consider? And do the options provide more opportunities for students? Being that this was going to be the last night, or the last meeting with actual, them receiving actual data, the presentation of options was more of a layered approach. So when they presented their options that evening, we asked, what changes regarding options previously presented have changed and why? What additional considerations should be reviewed? And overall, how do the options enhance programs and provide more opportunities? And again, because our focus was, how do we enhance programs through this consolidation? This slide here represents one of the inquiry questions that came about, again, focused on operational cost and facilities' master plan, and came about as part of our debrief. And talking about that school consolidation and asset management plan, while this, the role of that committee was to focus on school consolidation, they are somewhat of a parallel and sequential process. However, the asset management plan, that is a separate committee, and will look at some of the, and from, some of what happens through the consolidation will be kind of a domino effect that will then impact the asset management plan. But nevertheless, we wanted to be responsive to the committee's question and questions and provide them information. So we shared that while this was not a role of the committee, it was important information because they, as a committee, they were concerned in terms of the repurposing of property. How would the, if a school was consolidated, what would happen to that school, and what could potential use for that school be, in order to additionally enhance programs if possible? So we briefly touched on both of these that evening, again, to be responsive to the committee's Here was an example again of their question, the questions that came about, and this was an operational cost. And while, again, we shared with the committee that we fortunately are not doing this because of fiscal distress, which I'll talk about later in a slide as well, we were doing this to really enhance programs for our students, and really look at how do we maximize our resources. We wanted to be responsive, so here we provided the committee with just a brief analysis and comparison of two schools, and looking at what the cost in terms of some of those operationals. We don't have the cost of our actual teachers, because again, we emphasize with them that teachers follow students, just like programs follow students. So just looking at some of those costs that may potentially not be the, we wouldn't have two principals at one school, so just kind of focusing on those costs, those operational And so then we moved on to the, what the focus was for that evening, which again was education programs. And so our Education Services Division provided them with information regarding our programs. So this is an example of a slide in which all of the programs that are found within a feeder pattern at the elementary schools were discussed, and you can see here that most of our schools have most of the same programs, and so again, emphasizing the fact that programs follow students. CARES was also brought about in terms of conversation through the committee, and we shared with them that all sites have expanded learning programs, they use at least one room as the main hub, and again, that was part of really looking at capacity. Our special education team also presented that evening, and the focus was about continuum of programs. And so what they shared is that when they really look at programs and look at the possibility of the impact of consolidation, their focus was to really, again, look at that continuum, and look at the opportunities to be able to enhance that continuum through some of the consolidation, but again, with the focus of programs follow students. Okay? So that's our elementary, all of our special education programs at the elementary level, and then our secondary, because again, while we're not addressing high school, we are looking at feeder patterns and the importance of the continuum of programs. And then finally here, a visual of what the committee received, where you look at all of the different special education programs district-wide. So as you can see, the committee used a lot of data and looked at a lot of information as they were coming up with their options. And that evening, we, they really solidified their options, and we shared with them that we would be coming back based on their options and looking at it together and having some district information as well to, and some of the options that they presented to us, which leads us to our June 2nd meeting. And this was our meeting, where, in which we focused with the presentation of options. So previously, at all of the meetings, each feeder pattern would in the meeting by sharing their options, and each group would ask them questions. At our June 2nd meeting, which originally, we thought we were going to be needing an additional meeting, but because this group was very, very focused, very inquisitive, we actually got through all of the work by June 2nd. So this evening, what we did is we started first with the recap, so an additional discussion regarding the programs, and we confirmed with them that we were going to be presenting all of their work to the board tonight, June 18th. We also talked briefly about how some of our additional feasibility of the options would be done in coordination with AB 1219. However, when you look at some of the information from AB 1219, you will see that we hit a lot of that already, when you look at the topics that we discussed at all of the meetings. We looked at each option that they presented to us by looking at current capacity, merger enrollment, classrooms needed, potential classrooms for programs, facts, but actually, somebody in the, and the committee said, well, some of these may not necessarily be facts, but they should be more like considerations. So that's why I have that in parentheses there, and you'll see the difference with that. And then any further study, which again, we shared with them, all of your options will be additionally vetted by leadership in terms of looking at what is feasible. Then we did a quick study summary, and then we, again, discussed the next steps in terms of the committee's work, which would be shared, and the discussion of options based on work of the committee with further analysis. So again, that evening, we briefly touched on AB 1219 again, and here you see that these guidelines were addressed directly through the guided questions that we had previously talked. Assembly Bill 1219 is, is an assembly bill that districts that go into consolidation or have to start discussing consolidation because of fiscal distress, they must follow the guidelines within Assembly Bill 1219. However, they do, as you see here, physical condition of a school facility, capacity of a school to accommodate, environmental factors, balance of pupil demographics, transportation needs, these are all things that you would look at anyway, if you, when you were considering consolidation. So we shared this briefly with the group, but also emphasized the fact that our focus is enhancing programs. Unfortunately, we are not doing this for fiscal distress, but really looking at how do we maximize our resources and enhance our programs. And so here are the options that were discussed and presented, as I stated earlier, in terms of looking at current enrollment, what that merger would actually look like, and as, we'll walk through all of these very quickly, or briefly, in terms of how we did it with the committee that evening. So here at, with our Canyon High School feeder pattern, and again, this was, at that point, the committee, but all of us as a whole group, as a whole consolidation group, looking at these options. So with the Canyon High School feeder, you can see here that the one school that was identified as a potential consolidation there is Imperial Elementary. And different options were presented as part of that consolidation. Option one, looking at it as, at a split between Anaheim and Canyon, and for purposes of this exercise, we just looked at it as an even split. So for example, Imperial has 338 students, if you split it evenly amongst Anaheim Hills and Canyon Hills, each school would receive 169 students. I'm sorry, Canyon Rim, I apologize, apologize about that. Option two, we're looking at Anaheim Hills and Crescent Elementary, so again, an even split between those two. And then option C, a full merger with Crescent, I'm sorry, with Imperial going to Crescent. If you see here, again, because the committee was very focused, is there enough classrooms, enough capacity for programs? You see here that 10 potential classrooms, if we were able to relocate OPK, and we'll talk about that a little bit more, if we weren't relocating OPK, then there would be a concern for classrooms. So we'll talk about that when we get more into the feasibility of these options. Our El Medina group came up with the potential consolidation of three schools, Prospect, Jordan, and Linda Vista. And looking at the possibility of Prospect being consolidated to Esplanade, Jordan being consolidated to La Vida, and for Linda Vista, looking at two different options, looking at Linda Vista, pot- at Linda Vista potentially going to Villa Park Elementary, and/or being split between Chapman Hills and Villa Park. As you can see here, just from a brief, again, just an even split with not fully looking at the possibility of moving boundaries around, you see that Villa Park would not be able to absorb Linda Vista. And even if there was a split between Chapman Hills and Villa Park, there would still be a concern with Villa Park being able to absorb. So, again, showing the reason why additional feasibility of these options would need to be done. Oops. Could, every time, yes. Okay, so now getting to our Orange feeder pattern. So, our Orange, I'm sorry, still moving on there to, I went one too far. That's what happened. There we go. Okay, so with our Orange feeder pattern, there were seven schools that were identified, and you see them listed here. And so, Handy, Fairhaven, Cambridge, Palmyra, Sycamore, West Orange, and Portola Middle. So, with that many options, there were, I'm sorry, with that many potential consolidations, there were multiple options in this feeder pattern. So, starting with Handy here, you see that one of the options was for a four-way split. When we're looking at Fairhaven, a three-way split. Cambridge, looking at a two-way split. And then, Palmyra, all of Palmyra's students going to La Vida. Then moving on to Sycamore, the possibility of Portola absorbing Sycamore and becoming a K8. West Orange closure and going to Sycamore. And then, Portola closure of possibly looking at Portola being split between Lamson and Yorba, with Lamson becoming a K8, and Yorba receiving part of those students, and/or just a straight consolidation to Portola. So, multiple options in this feeder pattern. And finally, our last feeder pattern, that the committee, in terms of options, they came up with the feeder for Villa Park. And here, we see two schools identified for consolidation, and that's Olive Elementary and Fletcher Elementary. And so, with that, with looking at Olive, a potential three-way split, in terms of looking at that split between Taft, Fletcher, and Crescent, and also looking at another split, I'm sorry, another closure in terms of consolidation for Olive. And that's either looking at Olive going to, Olive, Olive going to Crescent, or Olive, Olive going to Noel Canyon. For Fletcher, looking at Fletcher going to Taft, and then, and/or Fletcher and Olive looking at Taft Elementary receiving, as well as Crescent receiving some of those potential students. So, multiple different ways of looking at the formation of those options. So, again, that evening, we looked at a summary of these options overall. And so, here you see the potential identified schools for consolidation of each of the feeder patterns, and as Mr. Christensen stated earlier, a potential of 13. However, looking at the previous options there, we see that if one is done, it may not be possible because there, another school would be absorbing. So, again, the need for additional analysis to be done for the actual feasibility of these options. So, as we had previously shared with the committee, that there would be, need to be done some additional work along with the work that they had already done, in terms of really looking at what is feasible based on these options, and based on what we're looking to do, and our goal of being able to enhance programs, and maximize our resources in terms of the consolidation process. So, those considerations would include which options provide the greatest opportunity for enhancement of programs, because that is our overall goal. Why the absorbing school makes sense? What can be efficiently managed? The impact on the feeder pattern, boundary changes, and neighboring schools. Transportation impact for both general education and special education students, as you saw with the, some of the environmental factors that we take into consideration. Repurposing use of school in alignment with the asset management plan, again, something that the committee was very concerned with, ensuring that we are looking at how can our schools that are consolidated, how can we use them? Especially because they were also concerned, we know we're declining enrollment right now, but what happens in 2050? And we all of a sudden start to increase in enrollment, and we no longer have these facilities? What's going to happen then? So, all of those factors were taken into consideration when we look at some of this, the feasibility. Our facilities master plan, so we did share with the committee, and looking at that through the consolidation, an absorbing school might become that school that is recommended for moving forward with modernization, as they become the absorbing school. Open enrollment impact, we are a district, as you saw on one of the slides there, where a lot of our families take advantage of open enrollment, and we are proud to say that we offer that opportunity for our parents, and we definitely want to continue to do that as part of the consolidation. So, taking that into consideration in terms of the impact of open enrollment. The committee's input on concern for future growth, as I stated early, earlier. So, when we look at the feasibility of those options, and we discuss the feasibility, we want you to know that these were the considerations that part of the committee as well, as well as district leadership continued to vet as we were looking at the information. Okay, so now, getting into the feasible options for consolidation based on the study, based on the information, the considerations, and based on future, I'm sorry, additional discussion regarding those options. So, here you see in front of you, those that are highlighted in yellow are the ones that we are looking at feasible options based on some of the information that we have already shared with you. So, at Canyon, it's Imperial Elementary. For our El Medina feeder pattern, it's Prospect Elementary. For our Villa Park High School feeder pattern, it would be Fletcher Elementary. And then, for our Orange feeder pattern, it will, it would be Portola Middle School. And we'll talk about each of these individually as we look at the future slides. So, here, the first one, as we stated, in terms of seeing it as a feasible option, is Imperial to Crescent. And again, with a focus, again, for educational programs and improving our educational programs. And I want to share that the numbers at the bottom, while they're not the merger numbers that the committee looked at, it's because we, when we talk about the phases and going into implementation, we're talking about 26, 27. And one of the things we would want to make sure with this is that we always have enough room for our neighborhood students. While we are a district that our parents take advantage of open enrollment, about 33% as I mentioned earlier, at our elementary and our middle school take advantage of that open enrollment, we always want to make sure that we have enough seats for our students that live within the boundaries. So, what you see here is what the new boundary would be if Imperial was to be absorbed by Crescent. And so, you see here that based on the neighborhood size and the expected enrollment, there is enough capacity. And so, taking some of the information that was studied during the committee's time there, the distance between Imperial to Crescent is .6 miles. So, while again, the boundaries change, there may be some impact in transportation, we would see it as minimal impact. However, we know there may be environmental factors that may add to that. Additionally, the repurposing, and I'll be, I'll be turning it over to Dr. Whitmer a little bit in a minute here, to talk more about the education program side of it, because a lot of that is what drove as well this decision there, is looking at the repurposing of Imperial, and the possibility of Orange pre-K going over to Imperial, which would actually enhance the capacity. It would actually enhance the capacity to 1,470. Okay? I'll turn it over to Dr. Whitmer to talk a little bit about, and that way, my voice can also take a little break there.
Thanks, Ms. Holgian. Yeah, grab some water there.
Thank you.
I'll start with a couple of things to consider generally. This applies to all of the feasible options. And first of all, and Ms. Holgian mentioned it earlier, programs follow students. So, whether it's a general ed program or a special ed program, we can move those programs from site to site. If something's bolted to the wall for a special program, we can unbolt it, not me, somebody more handy, and we can move that to the new site. We can also modify facilities in order to, you know, best prepare for those programs. A second thing to keep in mind is that higher enrollment at a school allows more options for students. It offers more classrooms, more teachers, more options, and more resources for families and staff. It certainly, that, and as a result, it reduces combo classes, which we have at a number of our sites. Wanted to add too, that also reduces staffing as a result. Sometimes, we need to help with staffing simply to keep the number of combo classes down at an individual school. So, I'll come back to that as we go through each of these feasible options. In regards to Imperial merging with Crescent, Crescent is a sought-after school in terms of our open enrollment program, and that's on an annual basis. If the school, if OPK was moved from the site, it would open 10 classrooms at Crescent. It's a large facility. We would be able to use that facility well. It has a pull-up and drop-off area in front of the OPK, present OPK area. And the facilities there, including restrooms, could be appropriate for younger grade levels like TK and K. So, those are some thoughts regarding the programs and how they can move from site to site.
Dr. Whitmer, I have a quick question on that. Do you have information on, because they are so close, you said .6 miles away from each other? Are there a certain number of Imperial students that already attend Crescent? I mean, is there a pull to, because I know Crescent is kind of a, takes a lot of students, are there a lot of Imperial students that go there already?
Yes, we have that data. I'm going to look over it, Ms. Holgian, for a moment.
It's okay. You can come back to it.
We, we actually have 52 students who already attend Crescent, and out of those 52, 32 are there who are gate students.
Okay.
Any other questions on this option?
Okay. I'm sure we'll have questions at the end on everything, as opposed, as opposed to just taking it piecemeal. I'm just butting in because I'll forget.
I have a quick question regarding the Crescent and Imperial. I just want to clarify, you'd mentioned it's .6 miles apart, but the chart had 1.6 miles, so I want to make sure it's clear it's .6.
I'll verify that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oops. Okay, so, and this one, and this, I know for sure Prospect and Esplanade, it's .6, so I'll verify that. Trustee Yamazaki on that, might have been an error there on that there. Okay, so, for Prospect to Esplanade, again, one of the factors there is proximity of the school sites to each other. So, again, .6 miles on that. And looking at the fact that both Prospect and Esplanade have some of the same programs, however, Esplanade was modernized from the studs up earlier in comparison to Prospect. So, it had a full, from the studs to, in terms of modernization. Additionally, Esplanade is up for eligibility of additional modernization in 2025. And what that means is that we would have the potential for matching funds from the state in terms of when, if we were to modernize. Merging would allow for a larger number of enrollment, which means that we would actually have a higher enrollment count to be eligible for those funds. So, based on what it, at the time of modernization, when it was, when, when you apply, if you have a higher enrollment, then now that eligibility is based on that enrollment. So, those are part of the factors in regards to considering Prospect to Esplanade. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Whitmer in terms of the programs.
Just a brief comment on Esplanade. This is a school that's a great example of combo classes. We had seven combo classes there. I think we were able to provide some relief and bring that down by a couple. But because we don't have enough classes at each grade level, we have very little flexibility, and ultimately, more combo classes are a result.
What is the enrollment at Esplanade?
288.
Okay, and Prospect's 295?
So, Prospect actually has 332.
Oh, okay.
And again, these numbers are based in terms of looking at the boundary changes to ensure that we have enough capacity for those students within the boundary, but again, taking advantage of our open enrollment throughout our district. Currently, we have 45 students from Prospect that go to Esplanade through open enrollment, and we have 29 that actually leave Esplanade to go to Prospect. So, we have more students from Prospect going to Esplanade, 45. Okay. Our next here, not somewhat of a consolidation, but more of also an enhancement in programs and options for our families. So, this one here in our, additionally in our El Medina, is a Jordan boundary incorporated with La Vida. So, current, and Jordan becoming a magnet school. So, currently, Jordan is our, one of our dual schools, however, it does not have an English-only track. So, in other words, students within that boundary are, their option is, and if they do decide to go to Jordan, then they are in a dual program. They do have an option of attending other schools within our district through open enrollment, but currently, Jordan only offers our dual program. If we expanded the boundaries and now made Jordan a magnet school, and made it an open enrollment, and made that boundary where Jordan, students that are currently in the Jordan, their boundaries would now become part of La Vida. So, their home school would be La Vida. It would potentially help to increase the enrollment at La Vida. Doesn't mean that those students would leave the Jordan program, they would still, but it also opens up opportunities for other students in the district. Not that, again, they don't have that through our open enrollment, but it now is an open enrollment, and it becomes a Jordan magnet school for our dual program. So, these were some of the thoughts behind looking at that. It also, with transportation, we are aware that because the boundaries would change for La Vida, potentially, some of those students that maybe are not able to leave Jordan and go to La Vida or other schools because of transportation, they would have that option of having an English-only program and using transportation if needed to go to La Vida. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Whitmer if he wants to add a little more on that.
Can I ask a question on that, though? So, you're saying that Jordan only has dual language, there's no English-only, so if somebody doesn't want to use, utilize that program and be in that program, they have to go through open enrollment to other schools, so they're not guaranteed being close to their home or anything?
That is correct.
Okay, so this would provide them a home school that would be close?
That is correct.
Okay.
And it was a question that was raised with the committee, asking, are there families that are wanting an English-only within the Jordan boundary? And the response was yes. We have had families asking, well, this is my only option, and this is my home school, but I do, and that's when we share with them, well, you have the option through open enrollment, but our open enrollment, as you saw earlier, they provide their own transportation. So, what you are stating is accurate.
Okay. Thank you.
I think you covered that well. Thank you.
Okay, so, Portola to Yorba. And looking at this feasible option, again, when you saw all of the options for Orange, there were multiple options in our Orange feeder pattern. And if you recall also, there was the slide with the environmental factors in Orange. So, there are, there would be a lot of environmental factors in terms of transportation, also taking into consideration that there are a lot of schools for, in terms of walking distance within, so the impact that that would have towards that community. And so, looking at instead, Portola to Yorba, so consolidating the two middle schools, and Dr. Whitmer will talk a little bit more about that in terms of the small numbers that we currently have at our middle schools, and also some of the changes that have happened within our feeder patterns in terms of our middle schools. In the past, we had two middle schools at many of our feeder patterns, and now, if you have, you know, been in the community, and many of you, of course, have with that, we know that now, Orange is the only feeder pattern with two middle schools. So, I'll let Dr. Whitmer talk a little bit more about that.
I think I can speak mostly to the expertise that the staff brings when two small middle schools are combined. We have secondary staff that have different credentials in different areas, programs at each school. With the merging of the school, more programs, more comprehensive programs can be offered, and we've got a wide variety of credentials to support those. We did talk briefly- We did talk briefly about the idea of a TK8 at Lamson as well, and if you look at a map, that kind of makes sense. When we dove into it, though, we would still see, with that model, we would see declining enrollment at the other middle schools. And we may not be able to provide as comprehensive of an experience for the middle schoolers, at least right away, at, at Lamson. So we went back to this Portola to Yorba as a more feasible option.
And in terms of the enrollment, as Dr. Whitmer said in regards to Lamson, we also talked about, our focus is also looking at how do we enhance enrollment through some of these consolidations in terms, so if that was split between Lamson and Yorba, then some of those students that went to Lamson would take away from those middle school students as well. Transportation-wise, there is, we are already providing transportation to Portola, and so that transportation would still provide, and now it would just be to Yorba, so there would be an extended time in terms of the students writing, or I should say, additional five or 10 minutes in terms of, for the transportation. However, we are already providing that. From a facility standpoint, Yorba was also one of the schools that was modernized from the studs up. So while Portola was not, there was minimal modernization. So again, looking at those facility, that facility component.
Thank you so much for all of this. The Orange feeder pattern was the one that the committee gave the most elementary options, and this doesn't, you know, address that. So I'm wondering if you can speak to, if you see any effects, you know, or why those aren't being considered, I guess, at this time?
Well, we definitely considered, all of the options were considered, but again, more of what is actually feasible. And so, and that was one of the things that we emphasized with the committee in looking at, if you, so far, if you've seen, we've made a recommendation, or I should say, the option or the feasibility of one per feeder pattern, and that's also addressing the fact of what can actually be managed, that's part of it. But additionally, for the Orange, it really had a lot to do with the environmental factors in terms of the location and the movement that would need to happen. We have some major streets in terms of the separation between schools. So now you are talking about potentially students having to cross, especially Chapman, that area there within. So there are many multiple factors thinking about all that, of that. Not saying that in the future, some of these schools may not be considered, depending on what takes place, based on some of the options that we are presenting to you. So it's really looking at what is feasible. Luckily, again, we're not doing it for fiscal distress, and instead, looking at how do we enhance programs, but also take all of these considerations into consideration in terms of making those decisions. So that was all part of it. Does anybody want to add anything?
I think you made a good point a moment ago about what we can actually do successfully as well. And so we're in these feasibility options studies, we thought these were the most feasible, rather than trying to do too much at one time.
With regard to middle schools, you had mentioned that that's the only feeder pattern where we have multiple middle schools, and those are both really small now, right? So the numbers are?
Little over 400 each.
Okay, and what is kind of the, I guess there, maybe there isn't an ideal amount of students for middle school, but I know we get a lot of students that drop off in middle school, and it's really important to have really solid, attractive programs to bring them in. Did you consider whether or not that larger campus, so if you had 800 kids or even 700 at a middle school, we would be able to provide just better services for our students? Is that part of what went into that when you chose the middle school versus elementary? Because I was curious about that, too, when you have so many, you know, options for elementary, why you chose that one? And I, I actually tend to agree with that, because it seems like a really good option, but...
Yeah, it's a really good question. I think it's twofold question, actually. One is related to some of the facilities concerns, and maybe the exterior, the drop-off, et cetera, that maybe Ms. Holgiin can speak to. As a former intermediate school principal, and just from my observations of middle schools over the years, when you have more students, you know, 800 to 1,000 students at a school, you can provide a lot more program opportunities. A master's schedule is very important in the process. The smaller the master's schedule, which is the central course planning tool at a secondary school, the smaller it is, the more limitations you have, and the less flexibility you have. A larger master's schedule at a secondary school, whether it's a middle school or a high school, allows you to provide not only the core education for every student, but the programs they're interested in, so we can actually engage them in pathways, for example, earlier in their, in their school career.
Do you provide examples of that?
We do have STEM programs. You asked, I think, about programs that might be an example. You know, we have STEM programs at some schools and not others. Sometimes schools focus, you know, into particular areas that they know they can staff and they have the credentials for, or can find the credentials for. With a larger, with a larger master's schedule, another option could be something like a biomedical, you know, pathway for the student that may not be interested in engineering. Those might be two examples, and maybe two different sets of interests from students at a school.
So if there were, you know, eight students interested in biomedical at one school and eight in another school, they'd have a more robust program as a group, you know, if they were combined together?
Yes, it would make more sense to offer that as an elective course, exactly.
Thank you.
And if I can just share, the reason why they're all down there is because everybody was involved in this process. Ms. Nibb was also a middle school principal at Yorba, so if you'd like to add anything, I, I want to encourage to open this up, too, so that you all can contribute.
I think Dr. Whitmer did a good job of covering that, but one specific example over at Yorba, they, they do have like a dance program, for example. That's a program that's not necessarily offered in the same way, say, at Portola Middle School. Additionally, CTE programs, as we're looking at providing those supports at each of the school sites, it's about trying to make sure we're giving as many options for students to consider, and the more students you have, the more options you can provide. And so that students are able to pick from a larger menu when they're looking at ranking their, you know, their elective choices or their pathway choices as they look to go further in things that interest them specifically.
And I would say a good example of that, I think that all of us could probably think of in our minds, is like a visual and performing arts program, where you might have, you know, a vocal music, you might have theater arts, you might have instrumental music, but you can imagine that at a campus that's so small, those students that have that interest might get splintered, where if you have a larger campus, you might be more inclined to provide those, those programs to them.
And Board President Erickson, to your question there, currently, Saravilla has, based on the information when this was printed, 734 students, while Santiago Charter Middle School has 1,120, and while they're chartered, they still have boundaries within our district. And then El Rancho has 1,115. Portola and Yorba, Portola has 411, Yorba has four, I'm sorry, 411, and Yorba has 412. So we're looking at a merged enrollment of over 800 students, more of that middle-size number, middle schools.
And I know, for instance, at Santiago, they have a pretty robust, like a conservatory, and we've lost teachers that have gone from OUSD over to these schools where they can actually utilize their talents and interests to a greater degree. Because if you only have six kids that are interested, you, you can't staff that. We can't do it. So I think that that, that's a, that to me is really important, that we're offering middle school students something really attractive, particularly on that side of the freeway, because it doesn't exist. And I think we see that, we have the culture survey, the campus survey coming up, and you can see that some of that, how much do you love your school, things like that, it sort of drops off in middle school. It's really high in elementary, and then it drops off a little bit in middle school, then it goes up again in high school. So it seems to me that that's a, something we really need to be focusing on, is really enhancing that middle school experience.
And I'm going to take this, go ahead.
Well, I, I think there's also a question about the facilities and about the, the traffic or the, the buses and cars pulling through, and the feasibility of Yorba for that.
Yeah, and that is something that we would have to further study and look at. Nevertheless, that is part of, as, something that would be considered as part of the transition plan, should these options move forward. We, and that's why trying to really talk and have these discussions is very important in terms of the next phases of the process. I do want to take advantage, though, because one of the things we talked about here, Portola, is I just realized that I failed to mention something regarding Crescent and Imperial. If you recall, in one of the options, there was a consideration of Imperial to Crescent, or Imperial being split between Crescent and Anaheim Hills. That is also something that we discussed, partly because we discussed about if OPK, the capacity would be somewhat tight. However, if OPK moves, that definitely opens up more. But then additionally, Anaheim Hills, kind of back to our point about taking some of the enrollment that could potentially go to Yorba. Anaheim Hills is also a school that is decreasing in enrollment, so by maybe looking at the boundaries, and later we'll talk about a survey, but by getting input from the community there as to an interest to Anaheim Hills, we would look at Imperial, part of Imperial being able to have that boundary change, in part going to Anaheim Hills. But again, that was something that was discussed as part of the feasibility in terms of looking at our overall enhancement of programs and trying to enhance enrollment throughout the So thank you for reminding me of that with the K8 there. So that's Portola-Yorba. And then our next one here is Fletcher to Taft. And so, again, this, the Villa Park feeder pattern, these two schools that were identified there, Olive and Fletcher. And Fletcher, here, looking at, part of it was driven by our facilities master plan. At one time, when that, that facilities master plan was developed, Taft was identified as being a world language school. Currently, Fletcher has the Mandarin program, so merging that program with Taft would allow that opportunity for that world language school. Additionally, it would offer more opportunities for our English-only students. Currently, right now, there is really only one class available for our English-only students. I know that sometimes, from what I understand, too, there's the, about how are we going to, does combo classes, and all of that comes into play. So I'll let Dr. Whitmer talk a little bit more about that, but this was part of a facilities master plan as well, too, and looking at making Taft a world language school.
That covers most of my talking points, but I think the point about one class at each grade level that is English, English-only instruction, that's an important point, because we have a high number of combo classes at the school each year, and it's very difficult. It provides very limited option, options in terms of moving students from one class to another if necessary, or just in terms of having teachers who can collaborate with another teacher at that particular grade level.
Just want to clarify, when you say English-only, you mean non-dual immersion?
Non-dual immersion, thank you.
Right, because that used to mean something different, and so, just want to make sure people understand, understand that. Also, the question I did have, though, on Imperial, I recall at the, I thought it was at the beginning of the year, that Imperial had a lot of combination, I remember getting a lot of emails about combination classes there. Is that, am I, am I recalling that correctly?
Yes, you're right.
Okay. That's what I thought.
We've divided a combo reduction.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
And just, just to make sure it gets on the record here, because I know Ms. Rodriguez does not have a microphone, that there were multiple combination classes at Imperial, and there was an additional teacher provided above the formula to help relieve some of those combo classes.
And our last option here, not necessarily consolidation, but more of an enhancement, because again, remembering that part of this was looking at how do we enhance programs. And one of the things we really emphasized with the committee is just because a school has low enrollment, does not mean that that is going to be the school, or has to be the school, to be consolidated. We made it very clear that every school was an option, and that their input was important in looking at this. So with Olive, as you saw, there were multiple ways that the options were in terms of looking at the potential split of Olive. But again, taking into consideration about the possibility of future growth, and looking at how do we enhance programs, and what are some programs that can be moved. Olive does have currently a program that unfortunately cannot be moved, and Dr. Whitmer will speak a little bit more to that. But here, what we looked at Olive is how do we enhance what it has, and how do we provide more, an opportunity of an enhancement of program that maybe the district can help to recruit and retain some of our enrollment through? So I'll let Dr. Whitmer talk a little more on that.
Well, first, Olive is an avid demo school, demonstration school, and it's a program we're very proud of. It's a, quite a distinguishment for, for the school. And that, the school has to remain in its location to maintain that designation. Secondly, Olive is in a really unique position. If you look at it on the map, and you go out to the facilities, and you see the fields, and you see that historic gym that's on the, on the campus, it poses an opportunity to create a sports academy, offering students an earlier experience for a combination of academics and sports, which would draw, draw students towards our school district. Certainly, other students within our district could access that through open enrollment as well, but, but it certainly could draw others to our district as well, and build a great base at a pretty cool school.
Can you explain exactly what a sports academy is? Like, what would that mean?
From my exposure to just what I've read about sports academies and, and the trends that are taking place with youth sports, you know, parents are interested in matching their students with sports at an earlier age. It's more competitive than it's ever been. And to be able to combine school academics with the student, with training at the site for, in a sport that is determined by the staff, most likely, and in concert with the district, then we can provide a, something that's attractive. It gathers student interest and makes them, you know, want to attend that particular school, because it matches who they are. I think, Ms. Nibb, do you have any thoughts on that one? We talked a little bit about sports academies in an earlier conversation.
I don't necessarily specifics, but I think that we see trends of those types of schools, sort of across the county, across the state. You see them at some charter schools, you see them in some public schools. And so I think the idea would be to kind of look at that option and explore the exact specificity of that with the community and with the interests that we're able to gather.
I'm kind of assuming that's more of a long-term, not, not really involved in the consolidation so much, right? Because I think one of the things we talked about with the facilities master planning is that, because that is, it is a really cool campus, for one thing, but it also borders Anaheim, so you could, if you have a program that's going to attract kids, we don't necessarily want to attract all the kids from within our district to go. We'd also like to get kids from outside of our district to come there. So I'm sure there's probably a lot of different ideas that we could explore about that, that might be good.
I think probably one additional note on the sports academy idea is that many of the parents that are interested in that type of programming also, you know, want the best for their students in terms of the athletic programs, but they're also looking for great quality teaching, and that's not something that you can just find anywhere that has a partnership with the, with the sports program. So it's something that I think OUSD is like perfectly poised to do, to add both the quality of teaching with a program like that.
It, it would, you're correct, though. It would take some time, take a commitment. This isn't going to be like, oh, next year, it's ready to go, right? It doesn't work that way. But this is, this is long-range planning, that's what we're talking about. But it's a way to address that, that, that asset and try and help enhance what OUSD has to offer. Santiago does it very well. They've offered to work with us to help us be able to make this work, because they recognize it's good for kids and it's good for families. My understanding is that kids are coming from all over Southern California to attend that program. So we don't do it just to attract kids, we want to be able to make sure we have a great program as well. As I said, tying it with an avid program school, an avid model school, that we would lose, right? If we moved it, the avid folks said, the program is that school. You can move all of those teachers to another school, the avid program, the title does not move with it. You'd have to requalify and start that process. So keeping that, that program there and acknowledging the great work that the staff has done, and administration, in trying to build- has done and administration and trying to build on that seems like an opportunity for us as opposed to just consolidating it in the short term. We may end up having to do that anyway. I don't want to mislead anybody, but it seems like it makes sense to give this at least a shot, to study it.
If I could, I'd like to clarify something, too. It's referred to as a showcase school, avid showcase school, not demonstration school.
Sure. I have a question about the previous slide, if possible. Throughout the presentation, you've shared how programs move with students. And so if the Mandarin program were to move from Fletcher to Taft, can you elaborate more on what that would look like? So I know you've shared that there's additional resources that would be able to be utilized if that happens. Is that something you can share? Or are you considering the world language school?
Well, the Mandarin program would remain, you know, intact. Really, the advantage would be adding, not only keeping the Mandarin program, but adding the additional classrooms that are non-dual immersion classrooms. And that's a huge feat and gain in itself.
And I think there would also, as Mr. Christensen alluded to, there's that transition phase in implementation, right? This is an opportunity to, once we look at, are these going to be feasible options in terms of moving forward? What additionally research do we need to do to really make it a robust program and really help to enhance more than what it already is offering? But definitely looking at a way that, now that we merge it, how do we boost it to another level?
Right, so one of the things that parents have been asking for is like a Mandarin TOSA. So would that be a possibility if the program were to move?
Sure. Anything's a possibility. I wouldn't want to promise it. But I think that as we combine sites and we have a more robust enrollment on a site, it provides more options and opportunities. So a Mandarin TOSA could also be a TOSA that does work with EO classes as well, right? Doesn't mean the person's just restricted to only doing work with the Mandarin classes. But that's part of doing this consolidation, and I talked about this back in January, right? It's opportunities for, as sites get larger, we have opportunities to hire assistant principals, opportunities to not share counselors or psychologists between schools, have them at a school, have them really know the population at that school and be assigned there. Additionally, as we talk about consolidating sites, if Taft becomes a much larger school now, because it consolidates, that would become a very attractive target to be one of the first elementary schools to be modernized. And we would have more eligibility for state money, as Ms. Ogden mentioned, with respect to Crescent, but it also applies here to Taft the same way. Taft has not been modernized, just like Crescent has not been modernized. So I would think that if, in fact, this were to happen, that would be a benefit to those communities, and that would involve having those students attend the school and then having those families and have input on what that modernization looks like. So there are some opportunities here by, by growing the enrollment at the school. So some pain, but some benefits as well. With regard to the, the World Language Academy, I wasn't around when that's, that was thought of, glimmer in somebody's eye. We talked about, well, does that mean we're also going to have a French immersion on this? I, you know, I don't know what that looks like. I think we need the community to help us figure that out and take advantage of that so that it'll be even more successful, if that's helpful.
Thank you for the clarification.
And just a quick comment, sorry. I know that one of the other big resources we had talked about, because I was on the Facility Master Planning Committee at the time, is that with a cultural program, program like, like they have at Fletcher, we currently, it's, it's a struggle at that school site now to have an NPR or a place where we can have big celebrations and big cultural events. And so having a bigger, you know, a campus and even maybe possibility for building more, but I know that was a wish list thing. But just anytime you add students and add funding, as you said, Superintendent Christensen, it just opens up more opportunities. So that's just one more example for people that may not know more about the program.
Yeah, you mentioned modernization, and I just want to be clear, because that's a terminology that we use to say improvements at our school. And so can you clarify to everybody, like, modernization, what that could entail? Because there's a difference between modernization or building a new school. And so I want to make sure that our public understands, like, what could happen at one of the schools that receives or absorbs the students.
Well, with, at any school that we modernize, a lot of money goes into infrastructure, which you don't see. So that's why it doesn't make a lot of sense, though it's beneficial, to take a pot of money and give every school $3 million. You take care of the electrical infrastructure, you take care of the sewer, but the school doesn't look any different. So really, the school doesn't feel modernized. The maintenance people are just happy because things aren't breaking down as much, so good for them. Ideally, and what we've been trying to do, what we've done with the high schools, is identify certain facilities at a site that should be addressed, potentially torn down and replaced. So it may, modernization may include the addition of new buildings, it may involve demolishing old buildings. The majority of the campus, though, it's refurbishing. It's, if possible, as was mentioned earlier in the presentation, as happened at Espinod and at Yorba, you know, demolishing the walls down to the studs, getting rid of all the asbestos, getting rid of the old electrical, getting rid of the old plumbing in the walls, and building that back up and remodeling those classrooms, additionally remodeling the restrooms. We have a challenge now, since from when I left in 2017, we now have a very robust TK program. What's happening is, our TK program, we are pushing out our kindergarteners into general ed classrooms, regular classrooms, because we need the bathrooms to be able to use for the TK students. So by looking at a school and fully modernizing it, I believe that's something that would be a high priority for us to deal with so that we continue to have adequate spaces for our TK classes now, right? And they're, they're addressed and modernized, and we have restrooms that are feasible, sufficient for them, as well as not ignoring our kindergarten student. So it can, it can run, you know, new technology, new fire alarms, all kinds of things that need to happen to make campuses safer. And then when we do that work, the State of California, Division of State Architect, will also take a look at all the accessibility requirements for the Division of State Architect. We get grandfathered at a lot of our older schools, we are grandfathered, because they were built in the 1960s. They are not up to current standards. With electrical, with sewer, but also with ADA access, with lighting, a lot of these things that need to be updated. So it can be as much or as little as somebody wants to do, but ideally, we would take a look at a campus, go into it, and really kind of take it apart and put it back together so that it, it works the way that it should work today in the 21st century.
Okay. I just also wanted to mention, you talked about eligibility, and can you just expand on the eligibility part? I knew it was mentioned, but I just feel like that's such an important component that it's worth repeating and expanding.
Sure. The way the state shares modernization money with school districts is they, well, it's kind of a reimbursement program. So we spend our money, then they will reimburse us up to a certain amount of money for modernization. But it's based on so much money per student. So if we have 1,000 students at a school versus 2,000 students at a school, we would have twice as much state money available if we had 2,000 students on that campus as opposed to 1,000 students. So it really, it's just, it breaks down that simply. Now, you know, so, or if we have, you know, 300 students versus 600 students, it's the same thing. So the nice thing about having more students is it, it doesn't cost a whole lot of money to modernize a classroom relative to modernizing restrooms, office, cafeteria, you know, building a multipurpose room or upgrading a multipurpose room. Crescent has a multipurpose room, right? But it's, it's old. So, you know, it doesn't necessarily have to be torn down and rebuilt, but it could certainly be refurbished. Taft does not have a multipurpose room, so there may be an opportunity there, and this board would have to make that decision on what the priorities are with input from the community at the school as to what's important. By doing that, then, we help establish a model that then we can take forward and show other elementary schools in the district what their schools could look like, and then maybe people would be interested in considering passing another bond in order to modernize our elementary schools. That help?
Yes, thank you.
Sure.
Appreciate it.
And just, I think you brought up a good point about watering down resources. So if we have two small schools, we can't afford to modernize both. But if we can combine schools, have a bigger school, we have more, we have one school now to modernize, and we're eligible for more matching funds to pay for it or offset the cost.
Yeah, as opposed to two cafeterias, you know, you know, nine or 10 bathrooms, you know, I mean, all of this stuff, it matters. And our schools were occupied with many more students in the early 2000s, right? And, and so, you know, we dealt with the parking, we dealt with the restrooms and all that. Some schools, all the restrooms aren't even open, right? But, but if we modernize the schools, we're going to be forced to upgrade those restrooms by the State of California for ADA reasons. I mean, I get the reason why, but when half of, some of our campuses, half of them are empty or, or, you know, 20, even 25%, then it's not as efficient to have to modernize, again, two kitchen areas, two office areas, you know, five restrooms and five restrooms as opposed to just five restrooms at one site, or maybe even adding restrooms for these TK classes that I'm talking about. It's much more efficient, because just like in your house, it costs a lot less money to update a bedroom than it does a kitchen. We have the exact same condition at our schools, just in different facilities.
Thank you, Mr. Christensen. And with that, here are some of our next steps and to some of the comments that Mr. Christensen said in regards to getting community input based on these options. One of our next steps in terms of moving forward is to send out a community staff survey for input during the months of June and July, where we would be asking some of these questions in regards to, for those schools that we are looking at with the options in terms of those consolidated schools. So we would specifically be sending it to those students impacted by the consolidation to get some of their input in regards to what are some of the, the other considerations that they would like us to focus on. In July, we would have a public hearing on options, so an additional opportunity for the community to provide some input regarding the options. In August, we would bring a report to the board based on that survey as well as our, the public hearing input. And then in September, depending on input received through the survey and public hearing process, possible action to adopt resolution to consolidate schools, and then looking at that transition. So remember, again, we're at the awareness and study, but really looking at that transition phase starting in September in order to be ready for implementation in August. So these would be some of the next steps in terms of the process that we are in. And finally, here on, on this slide, I know you have seen some of these names. I want to thank our incredible committee members who dedicated, again, we all said, countless of volunteer hours to this process. Very, very inquisitive group, really helped us think about some of the comments that they stated, some of the things that we needed to consider, which you saw part of and heard some of that information as part of our feasible options. And we also want to thank our district staff who supported this work. They were there strictly to facilitate the process and provide the information that was requested of the committee. As I stated, we met every Wednesday right after a meeting to ensure that we were going to get all of the information that the committee wanted back to them that following Monday. So really want to thank all of the committee members, district staff, for all of the work that they did in terms of putting, we condensed this. And so we know we've been providing you the presentations through your Friday weeklies, but just trying to make sure that there was a good understanding of all of the work that the committee did. So appreciate all of the, of the time. And I know this opens it up for discussion while we've already been having some discussion. Go ahead, Mr. Christensen.
Well, I was just going to say, I think if it's all right with the board, I'll have, ask Cabinet to come sit, hit their normal seats, and they may want to leave stuff there so they can go back afterwards to have a discussion with you all, but we do have public comment, and we generally take public comment after the staff's presentation. So if that's reasonable with you all, then I would recommend we start with that, because we're going to be, time's going to get tight.
Yep, absolutely. How many public comment cards do we have for this?
We have 13.
Okay. What does that?
Two minutes?
Two minutes each.
Okay.
Do you want me to read the description?
Yes, please.
So persons wishing to speak should submit a public comment card prior to the meeting. In general, individual speakers will be allowed three minutes to address the board on the agenda items only. The board shall limit the total time for public comment on each item to 30 minutes. A speaker shall not yield to another person any portion of the time allotted to him or her to speak. The total time for the agenda items shall be 30 minutes, and the time allowed for those who make requests to speak will be as follows. So it's be 11 to 13 speakers will each be allowed two minutes each.
And just to clarify for a study session, it is agenda item only. There's no non-agenda items, but we do have a meeting following this, and there will be non-agenda items that can be addressed at the next meeting, at the next meeting tonight, starting at 7:00.
Okay, so we have Robin. After Robin will be Jennifer.
Hi, I want to thank the committee for all their hard work, and I've only got a couple of points. First of all, can we make sure going forward that there is outreach to neighbors and not just parents? On a couple of slides, it appears that the special needs programs at La Vida Elementary were not included, so if you could correct those slides. I have a recommendation for putting a second sports academy at La Vida. There is certainly the room, and we can draw from a very wide population area. Then the last thing that I want to comment on is we're looking out nine years. And honestly, I'm not sure that nine years is long enough. Could we consider looking out maybe 15 years and making sure that we have everything we need going forward? Thank you.
Jennifer is next, and after Jennifer, it's Steve.
Hi. I have the privilege of being a teacher and a parent at Imperial, and so I just wanted to make a couple of comments for you guys to think about. From this side, it sounds like decisions have already been made, and although we've been told that they haven't been, it sure sounds like they have. So one thing that was said was that we need to maintain all that we do well. And I just, on record, as a teacher and a parent, I just want to tell you that Imperial is what we do well. I think I'd feel more confident in the decision if Imperial was going to be closed, but when it sounds like the option is just to swap sites with OPK, that doesn't make any sense to me. As a parent, I would much rather have my child at a school of 400 than at a school of 1,000 or approaching 1,000. Something that is wonderful about Imperial is that we are a small school, and it has a very much a private school feeling, which is why a lot of students come to our school. My home school for my kids is Canyon Rim, which although a lovely school, I would choose Imperial every day of the week over it just because it is a smaller school, and we know all the students there, all the families know each other, and it's a huge part of our community. In addition to that, we also have a great relationship with Canyon High School, and that's something that I didn't really see mentioned in any of the slides up there. Not having a staff member from Imperial, I understand how that happens, but I know that something as simple as kindergarten every year walks down with our sixth graders to Canyon High School, and we do trick-or-treating. Now, that sounds like it wouldn't make an impact, but let me tell you, our kids are so excited. They, this is a high school campus, this is what they do there, they get excited to see what's going to come next, and they talk about it from kindergarten all the way through sixth grade and beyond. That's something that's huge for us. Something else that we have is the careers and education program, where the Canyon High School students that want to be teachers in the future or work in the education field walk up the hill to our school. That is not available, obviously, if we move to another site where they would have to drive, and a lot of those students don't drive. So that's something that not only impacts Canyon, but is also a huge support to Imperial that was also not mentioned. In addition to that, you can see here that we have a community of parents and teachers who are very involved, that we have, I think, nine teachers from here from.
Steve, and then Lee is after.
Okay, it is on, apparently. Okay, well, I just want to thank you for your time today, and I just wanted to mention that I have been not only a teacher at Orange Unified since 1999, I was also a student at Orange Unified and grew up through these schools. And I care a lot about where Orange is going and the direction it's taking. That being said, I understand the need to make changes, and I understand that that is a difficult process, and I just want to let everyone know, I get it. You guys have to make some changes. Some things about Imperial you may not know, and Jennifer made some great points, is that it is a community that is very close-knit, is a community that has tradition- It is a community that has tradition and longevity in this area, and it is a community of caring, concern, and strong collaboration. We work very closely with our parents, as I'm sure many schools would say this, but it is also so very true of Imperial. It is also important to understand about what we do with our special ed students, with our four SDC classes, that we take great care to try and integrate them as closely as possible throughout our campus. That may or may not be something that could continue on with the consolidation, we're just not sure, but we do try to do our best to work with all issues and face all challenges we have and work very closely together. That is a difficult thing to transfer off into one place or another, or to part out to whatever places it might go. Are there difficulties? Sure, but one of the things I have appreciated about the staff at Imperial throughout any difficulties thrown at us is our way that we overcome anything that we face. Right now, we might see this as a difficulty to overcome, and I do thank you for your time today, and I would have more to say, but I just, again, wanted you to consider that community and all that it represents here tonight. Thank you.
Lee Lance, and up next is Courtney Kraus.
Hello, I'm here to represent Prospect Elementary. I'm a teacher there, and I've been a teacher there for 27 years. This makes me very nervous, so I'm sorry for my wobbly voice. I just, I want to advocate for Prospect. I hope we can try and keep it, and I know that we need to consolidate schools. I appreciate all the work you've done, all makes a lot of sense, but we have like a very together staff. I'm not saying right words, but we've been through a lot of things. We've worked really hard, and we work really well together lately. We're one of three title schools that has been mentioned by U.S. News that our school is in the top 40 of our nation, and I think that we, that's something to be extraordinarily proud of. Again, out of all the Title I schools in our district, only three were mentioned on that list, and we were one of them, and I think that says something. I think, I would like, I would like for Esplanade to move to Prospect. I think we have the space for it. We might have to add some portables, but it would be doable. And we, again, we work hard, we overcome many obstacles. We've been through so much as a staff, and we know how to motivate one another, and we would welcome newcomers as well. We'd be, we'd, you know, incorporate that and find a way to make that work as well. Anyways, that's all I have to say, but we're a strong school, and I'd like to continue to being one. Thank you.
Courtney Kraus, and up next is Cheryl Conley.
Good afternoon. My name is Courtney Kraus, and I'm a teacher, a parent of two students at Imperial Elementary, and a proud, proud product of OUSD education. I too attended Canyon High School, as Jennifer mentioned, and actually did have the opportunity to shadow some of these teachers when I was a student and ended up becoming a teacher at Imperial Elementary. From the moment I walked through the doors of Imperial more than 13 years ago, I knew it was an amazing school that was completely student-centered, a place I wanted to be a part of. Students' needs are the number one priority and always are at the forefront of every decision that is made. Inclusivity, collaboration, differentiation, communication, but most importantly, love are the core values of all of our students through this immense process. The immense dedication of each staff member at Imperial is often referred to as a public school with a private feel. Many of the teachers have been teaching there for over 20 years and have grown long-lasting relationships with our families. Breaking us apart will be detrimental to the social, emotional well-being of every single member of our close-knit community that is Imperial. I kindly request that you rethink the proposed closure. Imperial is not just a number, but a family that will be broken apart if you choose Imperial. I asked the staff and many families just a few, to get a few responses of what they would say, and I'm just going to read a little list that I wrote down. We were also named the top 40 best in the nation by U.S. News and World Report. Our staff has long-lasting rapport with our students, especially our special ed population. Most families have had the same teacher for three years in a row in the special ed department. We partner with Canyon High School, we collaborate together. Our busing route is close to the freeway, as many of our students are bussed in. Due to our small size, we have more individual attention, and we are better able to serve academic and emotional needs. Imperial is more than just a place of learning, it is a place where students are known by...
Cheryl Conley, and up next is Crystal Morphin.
Okay. Superintendent, members of the board, the consolidation committee, and fellow parents and committee members, thank you for giving me the chance to speak. I'm a federal government attorney and have a very stressful job. I made sure to log off work today to make it here, so you could put a face to a name of who this impacts. I stand before you tonight with a heart full of concern and simply, please don't close Imperial Elementary School. The Maldmaud Special Education Program has been life-changing and a beacon of hope and support for our most vulnerable students. I speak from personal experience because my daughter has been attending Imperial since Zoom kindergarten during the pandemic years, and she has thrived. At Imperial Elementary, the special education program is more than a classroom, it's a community. It's where teachers go the extra mile to understand each child's unique learning style. It's where therapists craft individual plans tailored to help every student grow, not just academically, but socially and emotionally as well. My child, like so many others, has found sanctuary there, a place where differences are not ignored, but celebrated. Would this level of care be replicated in Crescent's larger population? Closing the school would be more than convenient, it would be devastating. Students would lose connections with trusted teachers, it would strip away the consistency that they need to thrive. Lives would be uprooted, and our community, already navigating countless challenges, would lose a cornerstone of its strength. Please take this into consideration when you make the decision on choosing which schools to close and the reverberating and permanent effect it has on our community. Thank you for your time.
Crystal Morphin, and up next is Heather Waldenmeyer.
Trustee Paige, can we just take a quick pause in the public comment just so we can make sure that our timer is reset correctly? We're good? Okay, thank you.
Hi, I just want to thank you guys all for doing your due diligence and actually going through the motions to try to, you know, find a way, there is no easy way, to consolidate any of these schools, but I do want to thank you all for taking the time to do so and go through all the steps and not just, you know, see numbers and closing schools. I'm a parent of three kids, and Imperial means so much to me. I've been through your district myself as a student. I went all the way through, and to be here in front of you to plead that you keep Imperial open because it means so much. We do have special needs kids. It's not an easy transition to have your kid move schools, move programs, when the staff that are there know them so very well. Buzz, believe me, that, you know, my three kids were, my two kids were there, but even before Marissa, my daughter with special needs stepped on campus, every teacher before having them in their class has taken the time to know and to learn and to identify her needs and serve her in the way that needs to be specifically for her. And I greatly appreciate all of the staff members that are here because that really truly means so much to me. And I know that our community is small, but it allows everybody to focus on what is valued, and that is children. And that's why all of our staff members have taken the time to be here on their vacation to prove to all of you guys that their number one love is children, and that's why they're here. I just want you to think about, the one reason I bought my house was because my kids can walk to school. If we moved to Crescent, that'll be one main street that my children will have to now walk to.
Heather Waldenmeyer, and then afterwards will be Matt Kraus.
Good evening. I'm a parent of two children at Imperial Elementary. When we bought our home, we looked all across Orange County, Irvine, Tustin, and we settled on Orange because we ultimately really believe in this school district. Unfortunately, we were at a larger school with higher enrollment numbers, and my son was the victim of a bullying, a severe bullying situation where he was pushed off of a play structure. Luckily, he only broke his arm, but we learned how larger campuses with young children can impact safety. My son begged me not to send him back to that school because he said that no one could protect him, and that was when I learned that the trust between teachers and students is critical to students' emotional safety. Then we found Imperial, and that change has been night and day. The students love and respect their teachers. Both of my kids' teachers are actually here today to support parents like me, and my son, who was once terrified of going to school, now feels loved and supported and seen in a more close-knit environment. If you close Imperial, I would not move my kids to a large school like Crescent, I would take them out and put them into private school because we know for, you know, our history and for our family that that's not the right fit for us. So I do hope that the board considers the close-knit community of Imperial and metrics like mine that might not show up as well in graphs and charts. Thank you.
Matt Kraus, and afterwards will be Laura Wall.
Good evening, board members. Thank you for your time and listening to all of us tonight. I just wanted to say how proud I am seeing all the teachers and concerned parents here. It really means a lot to me to see everyone here, but my wife does teach at Imperial, and I do have two girls that go there, and it's, for them, it's not just a school, it's a community. It's a community that's based on love and support, and when they're in that type of community, it just makes education that much better. So I feel it'd be very detrimental to close Imperial, to have to divide or try to merge that school with another school. I don't know what kind of impact that would have, but I know it'd be a hard, a hard stress on those kids. And then important, as a parent, something that wasn't really mentioned by the committee, I don't know if they did go into this, but we all know that Imperial is in the hills, and as highlighted earlier this year, we had one of the worst, actually, it was the worst fires in Altadena and in the Palisades, and that's a very real concern for myself, and I'm sure a lot of other parents there, is closing a school in the hills is going to be one, moving those kids to another school, and it's going to make it that much harder to try and get, if there is ever an emergency, a fire, it's going to make it that much harder when you have 1,000 parents trying to get their kids out of school with all the confusion, panic going on. And we know that there's, just due to the geographical area, there's not many routes to get out, so it just adds to that much more confusion and panic, and in a time like that, closing another school in the hills, I feel like would be a poor decision and a very dangerous decision, trying, moving all those kids into one school. So thank you for your time.
Laura Wall, and afterwards Dawn Wernow.
Good evening. My question is a little different. It's more related to the decision to move up to nine principals from elementary schools this year. I just feel this is extremely destabilizing and...
I'm sorry, but this is not on the agenda. The only thing on the agenda is the consolidation, so I apologize, but you're certainly invited back to the next meeting. Thank you.
Good evening, Dawn Wernow. I just wanted to thank everybody for their mature consideration. There's a lot of competing interests, and there's a lot of different factors to be taken into consideration. I just wanted to second something that the young lady said when we first started. La Vida Elementary, the field is massive, and I've seen hundreds of people on the field engaging in soccer and other things. I think having a sports institute in that location would be a phenomenal use of the space and a great benefit to the district. That's my thought. Thank you.
Karen Barone, and then afterwards Frank Miller.
Good afternoon, Board President Erickson, Superintendent Christensen, board members and community. My name is Karen Barone. I'm the OUA president and teacher at La Vida Elementary and an OUSD parent, and I served on the school consolidation committee. And I want to highlight the diligent work of the committee and emphasize my support for school consolidation, focusing on the positive impacts it's going to have on our resources. One of the most striking revelations for me during our committee work was really how small some of our schools are, and it really had me wondering why this work hasn't been done and wasn't done years ago. And while difficult, consolidation does offer crucial benefits for our students and staff. It's going to help eliminate our combo classes. Schools will, consolidating schools will allow us to move away from those, which are not optimal for student learning or teacher effectiveness. And I do recall several months ago, one of our student board members sharing that she had been in combo classes from kinder to sixth grade. That's not acceptable. No teacher would tell you that's acceptable. It'll help with our larger school sites means more staff to meet the diverse needs of our students. Our current small schools often spread our teachers very thin, leading to burnout as we juggle numerous duties beyond instruction, and consolidation would provide more personnel. It will help make more resources available for our school sites, increasing our budgets, and then hopefully the addition of much-needed assistant principals at all, hear me, all of our elementary schools. Many of our sites have only one teacher per grade level, which limits the ability for collaboration. I recognize these are challenging decisions, but I firmly believe that consolidation will benefit our students, enhance our existing programs, enable OUSD become a standout district. And while I may not agree with all the recommendations provided today, I understand why it needs to be done, and furthermore, addressing this will proactively prevent future fiscal distress, helping us avoid scenarios like this.
Our last comment, Frank Miller.
Hi, I was on the consolidation committee. I was in the Villa Park feeder pattern group. We took our work very seriously. Matter of fact, about half of my group is here tonight, if not more, and I can't speak for everyone else, but I'm a little bit frustrated with the presentation. There are a lot of things that really weren't, the option presented to you from our feeder pattern is not the option that we presented, and I will tell you why. Moving Fletcher to Taft, based on the information we got, it says there are 501 students at Fletcher, there are 585 available spaces at Taft. Now, I also know that it says we have 313 available spaces at Fletcher, which I know for a fact that we do not. It also said that Villa Park Elementary had about 110, and I think we all know that there's not 110 spaces at Villa Park Elementary. So we found the available seats, if you will, data slightly flawed, if you will. Outside of that, if you go based off of those metrics, moving those 501 students over to Taft with their 585 seat availability, by their own metrics, that leaves two available classrooms for programs, which obviously, for a school then of that size, which would be somewhere in the 800s, I believe, is too small. Now, I know that Mr. Christensen said we can move portables over there, it takes about a year each, but, you know, at the same time, like, it seems odd. The other thing with the facilities master plan, with the idea that Taft would be a language academy, that was also never shared with us, and I'm not really sure why. And, you know, our option was to move all of, and as presented here tonight, it says an avid school cannot be moved. We are continually told, week after week, that programs move with students, and now we're just learning that avid does not move, and so after five weeks of doing that, I'm not sure why that wasn't shared with us. So, thank you.
Superintendent Christensen, can you clarify that? Because I believe that is new information regarding the avid showcase school versus an avid program, because I think we had that question. Because I think we had that question, and so...
That is my understanding, is that the program cannot be moved. We found that out in the last two weeks because we've been doing more research. Whether, I don't think it was kept from anyone purposefully, because the program's that we control, but that's not our program, right? I mean, it's, we offer it, but it's an avid program.
Correct.
As opposed to our program. So I believe what he's stating is correct in terms of that that wasn't shared because it wasn't known at the time, but that's why we're going through a process, and that's why we're taking comments.
And my understanding is they, they were named an avid showcase school, but they had to go through a multi-year process to get approved for it? If I'm not mistaken?
Yeah, I think, I think that's the distinction there, is, is to be named as a showcase school, you have to go through those steps, and Olive has done that. So if they move the school to another location, then, you know, if you're moving the staff over there, then the program may look the same and the same type of strategies and program, but the distinction of the showcase would not follow them. They would have to re-qualify for that, I believe. I'm looking for Ms. Rodriguez to nod. Okay. So I think that, that's the distinction, is the, the program moves, the distinction doesn't move with them. They'd have to re-qualify for that showcase status.
Maybe you can clarify that in a report to us, to the board, so we can see the information in writing. Absolutely. Thank you.
Well, I think part of that's what part of this is about, right? Getting community input so that then we can look at that and respond to it and bring that information back in public.
Exactly. So, okay, so as far as the board is concerned, who would like to begin the conversation? Do we have anybody that wants to start with discussion, questions? Trustee Vane.
First, thank you, everyone, for all of the hard work that went into this. There were many people on the committee and also many of you here to share with us your thoughts, and I appreciate that. One question I have, some of the public comment here spoke to the academic prowess of their school, if you will, and I didn't see us looking at existing, you know, outcomes of these schools, you know? Is that not an included reason? Or is it, could you, someone speak to why or why not we would be considering that sort of information in this process? Basically, student outcomes at the existing schools, like, I didn't see any of that.
Well, as we, you heard about the process that we went through, and that process did not take into account the student achievement results at each of the schools. It was a different type of process, as you heard.
Right, so, but our public is wanting to know, you know?
Well, we're happy to bring that information. That's why we're going through this process.
Okay.
That's what this is all about.
Okay, so in the future, we would have, hopefully, some information then on the achievement at these different schools and have that to consider.
Sure.
Yeah, we can provide that.
Thank you.
Okay. So want to thank everyone involved in the presentation. Special thanks to the committee and all those that were involved in this data collection, we'll call it. I think that was great work. I think it's sobering work. I think it's necessary work, and it is gonna be ongoing emotional with regards to the different programs, et cetera, that may be impacted. I love the idea that there's been equal distribution with regards to who would be impacted. I think everyone feels some of the pain under this, so that's, I think that's, that's laudable. But I want to talk a little bit about, real quick, or ask a question about the demographer and some of the information with regards to the decline, the projected decline between what I think is now and 2034. And I don't disagree that we should look at what Ms. Robin mentioned, which is going a little bit further out, but with regards to this, what's the worst-case scenario? Because I know that you presented the 3% with regards to our, our enrollment. What would be the worst-case scenario that you were able to generate from the demographer slash program?
Yeah, I don't think we have the numbers with us this evening. We'll get those for you, but it shows even more of a decline. So that, that would be the concern, right? That the decline is worse.
Exactly.
But I, we're not trying to force this or paint some picture like, oh, the sky is falling kind of thing, right? Because demographers look at trends, and trends continue. So you, it's not a trend if it suddenly reverses course. So the further out you go, the more suspect the data is, but we can certainly look and see what they are comfortable providing us. And then also the worst-case scenario.
Right. And then, so additionally, I would like to know about the, the fiscal cliff or that distress, and what that number or that range of numbers would be? That's also a consideration that our entire enrollment area needs to know about so they can be aware of why we're doing what we're doing in addition to everything else. It's not a consideration now, but it may be in several years that we need to be aware of. But thank you for the presentation.
First of all, I'd like to thank all the families and the stakeholders who are here this afternoon for taking your time to speak to the board. We also appreciate all the emails that we have received, and I just want to let you know that the input and concerns are being taken into consideration. I also would like to thank the staff and the committees for working extensively on this. In a way, it's kind of like playing Jenga and dominoes at the same time, you know? One thing impacts another in a dominoes and Jenga, you're pulling pieces out, so I, this is not easy. And so we definitely have to be really strategic in how we approach this. And we definitely want to provide a robust program for all of our students, and we recognize that people and schools will be impacted. As our president had mentioned, this is not an easy task, and it's deeply personal to our families. It's not taken lightly. And I sit on another statewide board, and many of my colleagues there have also expressed concerns in their school districts that are being, they have to go through, through this same process, and they're going through it for fiscal reasons, and we're not there yet, and we want to avoid that. So I'm, I'm pleased that we are looking at it ahead of time, and so with that, it's just not easy. And I have a lot, I have some questions. We mentioned that one of the reasons why this is happening is declining enrollment. In the demographic studies, it was mentioned lower birth rates is highly contributory to this. I have older kids, they're not having kids yet, and some of them, one of them doesn't want a kid. Anyways, and so I know that these things affect the enrollment, lack of housing here in California, lack of affordable housing, opening of some charter schools in our area. I want to ask, do you know how many students, OUSD students, attend charter schools in our area, offhand?
I don't, do you? No, we don't have that information. We can try and get, research that for you, but it's, we're only gonna be able to know the charter schools that we work with, right? Because if somebody's attending a charter school outside of the district, we may not be able to get that information, but we will never get that.
Right, but I'm talking about the OUSD students that attend a charter school within our district. And in my calculations over the years, I believe it's close to 500 students that left OUSD schools to go to charter schools, and that greatly impacts our enrollment. And so those are things that, you know, we need to make sure that our programs are strong and robust so we can compete with that. I also wanted to mention, well, ask, if an absorbing school has a higher enrollment, what kind of administrative support will that school get? Like, are we looking to getting an assistant principal at that school? Would there be more staff, or how does that look?
So it, what, our staffing is generally formula-driven. So as you saw earlier when they showed the slide with Prospect and Esplanade and the number of, one of the categories was .77 for one school and .85 at another. So that stuff is formula-driven. So it's, it's gonna depend on, with a larger school, you have more staff support, right? If you're talking about other than teachers. I assume that's what you're talking about, right?
Yeah, yeah, other than teachers, obviously, the ratio of teachers.
The teachers follow the students, right? So, so many, so many students equal a teacher, so that, that doesn't change. I mean, that, that, students may not be in the same teacher's class that they were in, right? Or were going to be in. But with respect to the other staffing, it, it's formulaically driven.
Okay.
So now there, we have not had elementary assistant principals in the district in a number of years.
Yeah, because of our declining enrollment to those schools.
Decline enrollment, trying to be efficient, are they needed? Some cases, they are needed, and we still don't have them, so we're talking about being able to address that.
Okay. One other logistical question I have is, an example of Imperial and Crescent, there were several options given, and one of them is splitting the school to attend two different schools. Just to be clear, if Imperial is split, would the split be determined by geographic, by a boundary? Or can parents choose which school to go to? Would the families have the option of open enrolling so they can keep friends or...
Yes, so both.
Connections together?
Right, so both. There would have to be a boundary area.
Okay.
And then in OUSD, we have open enrollment based on availability of seats. So if, if the school were slated, the board decided everybody's gonna go to Crescent at the end, that was the decision, then anybody who didn't want to go to Crescent would have open enrollment abilities to be able to go to other schools, other elementary schools, and that's happening now. If, same thing if it was split between, it would be a geographic split, right? Usually it's along a mountain ridge, it's a, you know, main roads.
Or major cross.
Major cross, right? Then if that were the split, then again, those families who are going to, say Anaheim Hills, would still have the right to open enroll at Crescent if they wanted to, or wherever else they wanted to go, and the same thing with the families who were attending Crescent, that same rule still apply. We still have open enrollment in the district, so they'd be able to attend whichever school they wanted to attend, or a third unnamed school if that were the case.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you all for being here today, sharing your stories. In addition to all the emails that you've sent, it's super impactful, especially when you share student, pictures of your students. I think all of us have read those emails and are thinking about that as we have this discussion today. Some of the community concerns that we've heard for many years now have been about our combination classes and the lack of resources that causes for our students, especially our facility needs. That's been a conversation we've had for many years, and the additional supports that our students need, especially now after COVID, those are a lot of the conversations that we've heard from our educators as well. And that's what sparked this plan and this conversation about school consolidation. So I'm glad that we're having discussions early so that they can be thoughtful and meaningful, and that we're not rushing into any decision-making, like trustee Yamazaki shared with a lot of her colleagues across the state that have to because of fiscal matters. I think this is a lot of information, and I thank the committee for sharing a lot of this, especially through our Friday memos and all the presentations that you've shared. But I think there's still, like, a lot more to explore in terms of what's to happen next. I know that Mr. Miller shared the numbers, and I don't know if you could share, elaborate more on the numbers in terms of what was shared in the spreadsheet of availability versus consolidation and what that would look like with movement?
Yes, so one of the things that we talked about with the committee in regards to capacity is the fact that every single teaching station was considered for a capacity, because again, the committee was very, very concerned with programs in the sense, and currently, right now, we have teaching stations that are being used for other programs. And so what we said to them is, right now, the information that you have in front of you, that capacity number is based on all of the teaching stations available at the school site. And so when you look at those slides with the options there and looking at the potential classrooms for programs, those would be classrooms that outside of teaching, that are not being used currently for actual teaching stations. And what I mean by that is an actual kindergarten classroom, first-grade classroom, sixth-grade classroom, and so forth. So really looking at that and then being able to then look at which programs would fit within there. So for example, with the Villa Park example, we see clearly there that if there was a merge in terms of taking any of those students, we would not have any classrooms for programs. So really identifying that additionally with that, the committee was very, very concerned to make sure that we weren't, they weren't having to use those teaching stations where there's actual kindergarten classrooms or a teacher, a teacher teaching there for CARES programs for any of those programs, so that teachers still have that availability for planning and all of that. So that's all of the information taken into consideration, and that's how the capacity information was described.
So the example being our CARES programs that happened before and after school aren't being utilized in the middle of the day, so that could be considered a teaching station?
They, they could, but again, and that was in the actual capacity in terms of what does, what capacity the school actually has. And that's again, why then from there you would do the backwards in terms of, well, we need four classrooms for programs. If there are seven classrooms, okay, that still leaves an availability for an additional three classrooms. That's how that capacity information was looked at.
And in addition to that, that would also include our wellness centers. So our wellness centers or parent classrooms that some of our elementary school sites have, those aren't considered teaching stations, but...
Yeah, yes, they were considered teaching stations, and again, that's, that would be a program, so that's why keeping all of that, so kind of the discussion was in regards to set-asides. How many teaching stations are set aside? And so we said to them, what you have in front of you is without any set-asides. You have the full capacity in terms of what the school was able to, if every single classroom was an actual teaching classroom for TK through sixth grade. However, we know that that is not the optimal situation. You have to have some set-asides, and so that's where there, then, we said, however programs follow students, and if we did have to endure a situation where you didn't have additional teaching stations, there is the possibility of portable, if we really feel that that is a feasible option or a reasonable one, that would make sense. Again, I keep giving that Villa Park example because that was a perfect example of where we saw there may be some, but we would have to consider some portable movement there.
Okay. And I think just my last question, curious for more information, maybe for public knowledge as well, is what, can we, like, define what additional student supports mean? So what that would look like for elementary schools and our middle schools? To kind of give a clearer picture to a lot of our families of, of what that looks like? I think we know it because we talk about it regularly, but if we were to share that if this were to happen, what additional student supports would occur?
Well, and Dr. Whitmer at any time, if you wanted to jump in here. So for example, you, you stated an example of a wellness center, right? In terms of a space, wellness space, I should say, in terms of support for students. So with the example of Prospect and Esplanade, we know that there's already one there, so now you are, you wouldn't need another one because that would be an available space for that program already there. So those are some examples, counseling support, different supports that are there, and as Mr. Christensen stated, is looking at the additional staffing. That may be a possibility based on this in terms of consolidating some of that and/or just that opportunity to have a more robust support system based on that versus traveling. We have some of our internal, support staff that have to go to multiple sites because the enrollment is so low. Now it would be consolidated into one site, and I don't know if Dr. Whitmer wants to add, but...
That's the point I was going to make, actually, about, we often split psychologists, for example, among sites because of the lower numbers. If we have a consolidation and more students are at the school, then that would qualify for maybe a staff member, a psychologist, just as an example, for that particular school.
And then I would just like to, to add to that, that I think the conversation about those additional teaching spaces or what spaces are available at the school, I think, practically speaking, you know, when some of these schools were built, they weren't built for the programs that we offer today. And that includes both office-based service providers, wellness spaces, as you mentioned, community resource centers, things like that, that might be pushing into traditional teaching spaces as we define them now. And so that's why additional details need to be vetted out in terms of the individual options that were provided today. So that's where some of that detailed work comes into, because not every school has a community resource center, not every school... Not every school has some service providers that are taking up one classroom and they divide the space and they divide the time. So that's where some of that finer work comes in. But definitely, you know, I think we probably could have added another 10 sessions with our committee that we had to get into even more details and they were ready for it too because they had a lot of questions and they were interested in some of those details. But some of that work, I think, needs to be further investigated and researched by staff.
Thank you for that. And I'm just going to reiterate what I always share is like when we send the survey out, that it's family-friendly language because we use a lot of education terminology. And if we were to ask, you know, what are some of additional supports that you would want for your students that we give clear examples as to what those are?
Thank you. That was a really thorough report and I know you were condensing it because there were so much more, we could have spent hours and hours. And I really want to thank the committee, everybody that worked on that committee because I know how much work it was and I was really impressed to hear that they're asking all these questions, things that we hadn't thought of or that, you know, the district hadn't thought of. That's the point. We need to get all those perspectives. And for those of you that came to comment, same thing, we're getting more and more information from you all. Decisions have not been made. I mean, this is why we're learning. And just seeing the support from, from all of you for your schools, that means a lot, whether it's one person from a school or, or all of you, it really does mean a lot and we understand that. I think we all have said this a million times, but every one of us up here has a commitment to the district, a personal commitment because we've all had kids that have gone to school or gone to these schools ourselves or worked here. And every one of us probably has a couple of schools that are on this list that we're like, oh, we're emotionally tied to as well. When I was in another district, we closed a school and we had to split and send all the kids and people in that school to two others. And I became the principal of the school that, one of the schools that it was sent to. And so we went through that whole process. The school that was closed was one that I taught at for nine years. So I do understand when you have a home and you feel like it's being taken away. I think it's just important to reiterate that we're going to do the best we can to make sure that staff can follow so that the same teachers will be with those same kids, you know, as much as possible. Every year there's changes, but we really are, are understanding of that. So I just hope you all, all know how much we do appreciate this and we're still learning. So keep the comments coming. It's okay. We like the emails. I want to go back, they're like, do we? No, we do, we do. It's good, good reading. I want to go back to the capacity enrollment for just a minute. I had the same question, so thank you, Trustee Page. So that was my big question. This is kind of like the max capacity we're looking at. Was it on like a 30 to one teacher ratio?
Correct, 30 to one.
Okay. So, and I know, we have to look at that max capacity. Obviously, and I, we've already kind of mentioned it, we don't want to pack the school full because we do have really important things like our, our community centers, our CARES, our, our wellness centers. And when a school becomes bigger, there may be need for more than just one. If we have a school of seven or eight hundred kids, potentially a thousand, we may need a wellness center for primary and a wellness center for upper grades. I mean, it's a lot already in a small school for one counselor to handle all of the students coming in a wellness center. That's just an example. So it's not just the math of, we have this one, this will be good. We may need more. And CARES, I'd like to maybe get a little more information in our next whatever report or something more I know you guys will look at about CARES because it's the same thing. If one school has two CARES classrooms, another school has two CARES, well, if this school is really becoming enhanced and modernized, we may need to make sure we've got a fifth room for CARES. You know, we have to allow for hopeful, being optimistic, the growth that we're going to get when we do enhance these programs. And the same goes with, you know, you mentioned the, the office spaces for counselors and for psychologists. You know, we put them in some of the tiniest little spots because we need to maximize capacity. We need to make sure we really are giving them adequate space. The psychologist doesn't necessarily need a full classroom, but we need to make sure that when we do our modernizations, that's something we take into account. And I know we will, but I just kind of want to bring these things up so people know that we really are considering all these things. You know, I know things come up, like a multipurpose room may work for a school of 500, but now we've got a school of a thousand, we're not going to be able to fit everybody in there. PTA can't always pay for three different assemblies when they normally would pay for two. I mean, these are all the little things and these are the things, again, parents and committee members, teachers, we need to remember all these things. My memory's getting a little old after two years, but I can still think of some of these things. But those are just a lot of the little tiny details that we're still getting. And we just want to assure you that we really are going to be doing our due diligence. I think with all these educators and parents up here, we're going to be giving you guys a lot of summer work. So again, thank you just for all that you guys have done. And it's hard, but I think this is going to be something that can really benefit a lot of our students in the district.
First and foremost, thank you to everyone who showed up and everyone who was on the committee. I appreciate it more than you know. The challenges of declining enrollment, there's so many. Having worked in school districts almost 30 years now, it's rough. And no one wants to think of school closures, especially me, growing up in this district and so many others in this room who grew up in this district and who work, work or worked for this district. Competition amongst districts now, when did that come into play? Has it been like 10 years? I mean, Orange Unified Edge, Anaheim Union, I don't even remember it anymore. But the competition is fierce and again, no one wants to see schools close, especially the ones near and dear to their heart. Most of my questions were answered along the way. That's why I like being last. But I do have one question. Am I correct that Portola has not been modernized?
Had minor modernization, some HVAC work and different. I know their multipurpose room has had some work on it, but not to the level of what Yorba has had.
Okay, thank you. Anyway, again, thank you to everyone and that's all I have for now.
All right, thank you. And thank you to all my colleagues for really great questions. Thank you for everybody who's shown up and spoken. This is, this is a big deal. This is a really big deal. And frankly, I mean, almost every school community, that's what's so great about our schools is there are these communities within our school that feel tight and feel close. I know there is a benefit to small schools. I had children that went to Chapman Hills, but I also had kids that went to La Vida. And so there's different communities in each school, but they all have value. And so I don't want anybody to ever think their schools are being punished or something by this. That's not what this is. It really is trying to do the best we can with the information we have. Schools that are near and dear to your heart, Prospect, that's where I went to school. My first little boyfriend gave me a little plastic heart from TGNY that he got at the, a Rexall. I think it was Rexall that was around the corner. I mean, lots and lots and lots of memories and these schools are all really, really special. I think from my perspective, I sort of see that we probably need to set a few priorities. One of the things that I think concerns me is consolidating into Crescent, with Crescent already being a really large school of, I think, 800. I feel like if we're going to do that, that that needs to be a little bit of a longer-term project, maybe. And maybe these are questions that you can answer because I just, the facilities themselves, I am concerned about that. I'm concerned about the facility and the state of the facilities accommodating all of those new students from Imperial. I don't know if that is, in my mind, is the biggest priority. I look at Prospect and Esplanade because that's going to create a huge school. And I, and the, the facilities itself, I'm afraid that we're not going to really be able to do well with that. We're going to have to modernize that. And that modernization may take five years before we can get to it. So I'm a little bit concerned about that. I am really concerned about Jordan and those students not being able to, having to engage in an open enrollment situation if they do not want to partake in the dual enrollment. And I think that that should probably be a priority, that we create this magnet school for Jordan and really build that program, but allow those students to have their own attendance area because they shouldn't have to beg to get into another school or be stuck at a school that they don't want to be at because they, they don't want that program. I think that that's a really excellent suggestion and I think one that is really student-focused and family-focused. With the Prospect and Esplanade consolidation, I think, I mean, I think that that's always been talked about and I think it probably is a priority because both of those schools are tiny. And Esplanade has been re, remodeled. And if we were to go ahead and do increased facilities improvements at Esplanade, we would also then qualify for matching funds. I don't know what the matching fund qualific, or eligibility is at Crescent. Now, that's a question maybe we can get an answer to. But I think from a programmatic standpoint, although my heart is with Prospect and I love it, I think that having schools that are that tiny, combining that into just a kind of a regular-sized school, they're, they're really tiny right now. And I think it would just create, I don't know, a better program for those students. And from what I think I heard you say, is that there are students that are in the Prospect attendance area that are attending Esplanade and it is a .6 miles away. So to me, that kind of makes sense and makes sense from a facility standpoint, a programmatic standpoint and a geographic standpoint. And I also feel the same way about Portola and Yorba. It's the same analysis for me. And although I appreciate what Dr. Glass said about making sure that it's spread throughout the district, the same problems that exist for Portola and Yorba and Prospect and Esplanade because of their size don't exist, I don't think, in the other options. I don't think that there's as much of a emergency, so to speak, I guess, for the other ones. Like I feel like maybe we need to be kind of prioritizing and saying, these are the ones we're going to look at for next school year and then maybe continue to look at the other options for perhaps the following year, if, if that's appropriate. I don't know. I also wanted to know as far as the demographics go, what kind of, if, if you know and if you can answer this or the demographer can answer, what housing trends were looked at? And like for instance, I know up at Chapman Hills, there's, I think it's 1,100 new homes that are going up there. I don't know about other developments in the city of Orange and the city of Anaheim that might be impacting this, but I want to make sure that I understood that. And I agree, I don't think we can just create a school that's so large that there's no room for growth and it could potentially really, I think, backfire if we do that. I think we need to kind of be almost conservative in our approach to it so that we're really truly making a difference for those students and biting off what we can chew in terms of potentially improving these campuses and improving these programs and making sure that we're taking care of those things that we want to take care of, which are lowering combination classes, things that, that really do impact students. So those are kind of, I guess, my, that's my takeaway from this presentation is really I want to prioritize facilities and space program. I want to take care of that Jordan situation. I don't see personally, I'm not sure that the Crescent, Imperial questions are really answered sufficiently for me at this point in time. The Fletcher Taft one is a little bit more interesting. Obviously, there was a facilities master plan that, that was developed by, I don't know, I can't remember how many people were part of that. It was about a thousand people or something that participated in it. It was before COVID. That was something that they put together. And I think in general, it, it seems like a good idea. I don't know, I don't know if it's the priority right now or not. It's up to more, more voices than mine, but that's it. That's my input, so. Does anybody else have anything to add?
I, I don't think we spoke very much about the opportunities for the public input in the surveys. So on the slide, it said June, July, which is like right now, basically. So the survey, we can expect to go out pretty soon. And I would like to also make sure that there's maybe a series of surveys. So one, you know, surveying the communities that, you know, may be affected by the consolidation, but also surveys about those facilities. So for example, if families are moving, it would be great for them to have a say. And, you know, I would like to see this or that in this type of school that I go to, you know. So having some of those facilities types of questions on those surveys, if that makes sense. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, so is the, the plan is to move forward with surveys as to all five of these recommendations?
Not necessarily, not if that's not what the board's preference is. That's why this is an information item.
Yeah.
So we can have a discussion and get direction. So the, the next steps in our mind would be to survey, but if there's not a consensus, say, say there's, your, your proposal is, you felt like there wasn't an urgency, I believe you said, with Fletcher Taft or with Crescent and, or anybody in Imperial. So we don't, if, if the board wants to wait and look at that at some point in the future, that's fine. We're not, we're trying to present options to the board. That's why they're called options, so that the board can respond and decide how they want to move forward. So I mean, I think it's taking, taking these schools, you know, one at a time to decide if that is the interest. And I know you waited till the end to speak, but, you know, others, I mean, is, is there a consensus, if you will, that, you know, we should reach out to the Portola folks and survey them and see what their concerns are or how they feel about consolidating with Yorba? Let's ask that one first.
Yeah, I mean, is there a consensus that we should pursue that in terms of the survey and input and sort of go down that road when it, as it applies to Portola-Yorba?
I don't think we're there yet for that conversation. That's a little bit more, we need more information regarding that. There's some adolescent development issues that come to mind for me. And the way I approached this meeting was more of a data collection. I, I did not, I was not prepared to give direction, right? So because of that, I'm, I'm just listening. There's some obvious questions that come up. But at the same time, if I were to make decisions, right, or at least offer decisions, wouldn't necessarily be to have Yorba and Portola together. And I would love to have more information about that. But at the same time, to your point, I don't think that a survey, that, that would be fearful.
That's why I'm asking, right? That's the, that's the purpose of this discussion tonight is so that we can have these conversations and decide how to move forward. So if the consent, you know, if, if that isn't a consensus, there's no reason to do that and we can bring back more information about what that would look like and try and get answers to what questions that you have, if there's an interest in doing that. So Prospect and Esplanade, you'd mentioned, is there an interest in doing that? In, in surveying the community on that?
Well, and just to be clear, I only see this survey not as a decision. It's a survey to get more data. Because we only have Imperial here and a little couple of other people. We haven't heard from anybody, so...
But I don't want to create a lot of angst with people in the world if there's no reason to. There's already enough angst out there, just the fact that we're even talking about this. I'm sorry, Dr. Glass, did you?
That's the, that's the whole thing. If you send out a survey that alerts the group that we are making that decision and we're asking them how they want it to be done versus data collect. They, people don't see it as data collection. They don't see it as, you know, I just want to get some information. They see it as, this is going to happen and I'm going to ask you how you want it to happen. I'm just, I'm not prepared for that.
So would we have another study session then after we receive all this additional information that we're interested in? Would that be the alternative route as opposed to like survey here?
I think the alternative route then... I think the alternative route then is, is don't do any surveys, do not have a hearing in July, but staff to start bringing back, I guess, specific information about specific schools and how many classrooms there are, what, who would be housed where? Because I think that's what I'm hearing, right? That you want to understand and have a sense of comfort with space. And that, because I'm hearing a lot of questions about support and how, where's, do we have room for a psychologist? We know that. How many psychologists would we have? What does the formula tell us that we would need typically to have for that size of a school? And bring back more of that minutia, and, and that's great. That's a way forward.
I guess the question is, do we want staff to do that as to all five of their, of their options? Is that what we want them to do? Because that's, or do we want to prioritize? It's up to you.
I just feel like the more information we have, the better decision we can make. And if we just choose three, then we've kind of already narrowed down our choice. Because those three may all not look great, and then all of a sudden we decide, well, maybe we should have these other two. We may as well do them all. That really would be my biggest concern. I need to see what this looks like. And we have to think about VAPA. I mean, I'm still thinking of other things, you know, VAPA, that's a huge deal. We have to have classrooms for them to practice, or to have their classes, and it can't always be a classroom. Sometimes it has to be something else. Instruments are loud, it distracts from somebody else. I mean, there's just so many things. So I think personally, just me, I would like to have more of that information for all of the, all five.
And I don't know that we would bring them all, because it's going to take a lot of work to put it together, right? Because that was kind of the next step after we got input was to do this work anyway. So I mean, it doesn't, it's fine to do it, to do it one-on-one or do it on all five. It would just be coming to the board as information items as they were ready, as opposed to, oh, we're going to have all this stuff for you next month. I wouldn't want to create some kind of a promise like that.
I don't think we can prioritize them without having information about all of them. So I agree with Trustee Pelley.
So is that, that feels like a consensus to me, is how we move forward?
Yeah. So it sounds like the consensus is everybody wants questions answered. I think Dr. Glass is concerned about the whole middle school developmental issues and things that are just a little bit deeper than the other issues, which are more, I'm gathering, more facility-related, like how are we going to fit all of these students on campus and is it going to be productive? Can we actually do it? And what does that look like? And all of the, I mean, there were a lot of really good questions. So I think all of the questions that the board asked are fair game for you to bring us back another report or to provide it to us in whatever method you want. It looks like we're going to be, but we'll be back again for another study session prior to doing any sort of surveys or anything like that. But the thing is, is once we have that and then we do a survey, then you're going to be in the same position that you're concerned about either way.
No, no, not at all. What happens is we get all of our questions answered. This is my perspective. We have everyone's questions answered in a report, then you put the survey out. Because then we're making a decision with most information. If we don't have the most information and we're doing the survey, it's almost like we've predetermined. And we just don't want to predetermined. We just want to get all the information we can and not piecemeal it. Because it sounded like at the original point that we're making here, how do you feel about Portola-Yorba? How do you feel about Prospect and Esplanade? Well, that's a different conversation. It seems like we are choosing on this side of the conversation versus getting all the information based on what we asked about. And the surveys for possibly everyone, and then from there, come back and make a decision. It may delay the timeline, right? But I'm not sure there's an urgency, which goes back to what my questions originally were. Like, what's the, what's the physical cliff that we'd be looking at? How negative it's going to be? You know, I know that the enrollment is going to be worse, potentially prospective, but it's not necessarily true. But 3% is 3%, and we go from there. If we get all the information, the public can see that we're trying to make the best decision based on the most information, and we're including them in the conversation.
I understand. I think we're almost saying the same thing, but we're not. Just because that's, to me, that's part of the additional information I want, but, okay. Ms. Yamazaki, did you, were you going to say something?
No, well, no, but.
Turn it off.
Since you called on me, I will just say, I want to thank the public for coming here again. And I really appreciate the civility and the really thoughtful comments because it's always not the case when we have a big crowd. And so again, we're listening to you and we want to make sure that we do the best we can for you.
Definitely. Okay. All right. So staff has your work cut out for you. And we will be back. And again, to emphasize, there is no timeline. That was, I think, a suggested timeline, but there is no timeline. We have not determined that we have to have an answer by X date. So I think that was just staff's proposed timeline if we were ready to move forward, and we're clearly not. So, okay. All right. Then I think that is it. We can adjourn those work-study session at 6:15.